All the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. As you can see, I got, had some surgery done today. No, I'm not turning into a unicorn. So, no unicorn jokes. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Krista Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine. Here.
Okay, looks like we all made it.
Is now when I make my comment about amending the agenda?
Um.
I'd like to amend the agenda to include 1K, which is communication. Oh, make a motion.
You're making a motion?
Thank you, Artie. Make a motion to amend the agenda and add 1K, which is communication regarding Planning Commission concerns of Artie Bryson's.
Support. Okay, a motion and support. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any information or?
I do. I can pass it out now.
I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable discussing something that we haven't seen.
Well, let me pass it out. It's information when we had the meeting.
Okay.
On December 6th, after the meeting, you mentioned to me you had several concerns about the Planning Commission, and I told you that I would contact them and get ahold of Kathy Schwickert and get answers from her. So, I did, and she sent them back to me.
Let's see if we, if we, um, any more discussion? Hearing none, let's do a vote. You want to do roll call or how do you want to do it? Let's do a roll call.
To amend the agenda?
To amend the agenda.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
No.
Kristy Hilton.
No.
Krista Regan.
No.
Cindy Valentine. No. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Motion fails.
So, a little disturbed on this because when you make it, when you make it, when you make a motion, when you make a motion to amend the agenda, we have a roll call and it's bypassed, and we haven't seen any of that stuff.
This is information you asked to be shared, and I'm sharing it with the board.
Right.
And everyone because of changes that you want to make.
Okay.
I would have gotten it to everyone earlier, but.
It should, we should have had it earlier. It should be on the agenda, and I'm sorry.
I contacted earlier today to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, it should have been by Thursday to do it properly. There's nothing, we're not hiding nothing. We can put it on the next meeting's agenda, probably.
I'll just share it during board comments, then.
Okay, um, so where were we? Bill's payable, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Bill's payable this week in the amount of $113,933.15.
Support.
Okay, motion, support. Any questions?
Yes, I have one regarding page three on the bill, on the bill's payable. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. On page three, the last one, I talked with Kristy about this because I had forgotten about it, and she explained it to me, and I will ask her to explain it to the board. It's the last one on the page, Department 445, down at the bottom, 101-445-967, regarding the drainage at large.
So, that is Clay Township's portion of the St. Clair County drain.
It's assessment.
Assessment, okay, because I didn't, I forgot about it, or I didn't remember it, or.
And that is a.
I got it right here in front of me.
Well, be quiet out there, then. So, she asked about a bill that was paid, and it was for, to St. Clair County, it's for our drainage special assessment, and that was a budget item.
Thank you, we don't have copies of that, it's just the one up there.
Okay, any more discussion on the bill's payable? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next is our supervisor's report. Been working a lot on our water and sewer work, and still, I didn't get quite as much done this week on that as I wanted to, but we're going to probably do amendment on some of those, on the wording on those here in the next month or so. Dealing with a lot of building and blight issues, we did settle one, actually, I think we settled two actions this past, since our past meeting, and we initiated another court action. Been doing a lot of working on the pension liability and the bonding. Had a few meetings and with Department of Treasury and providing them with lots of information. Kristy has been busting their butt on that, I know. Thank you, Kristy. And on another note, it was about two hours ago, I got an email, Standard and Poor's, they rate us for our bonding, and they gave us a double A rating, which was really the gold standard for any community our size, and they look at things like budget performance, management, debt ratios, and how the financial future of the township looks. Like I say, they gave us a double A rating, so that's good news. Roads, Fruit Road was closed for about three days over, next to Island Drive. They replaced a large culvert, and that job is done. And we did a lot of grading on gravel roads this past week when it was dry and warmer weather. And then again, I got confirmation on the County Road Commission. They're going to be repaving Anchor Bay Drive, Golf Course, or yeah, Golf Course, Middle Channel, Part of North Channel, and All Bates Highway this next year. So, that's a lot of roadwork we have done here, and I actually had to do some work today with them, and where they replaced the Flamingo Bridge, there was a pole, a DTE pole, that was left in the wrong position, and did some talking between the County Road and DTE, and they're going to remove that pole that was installed, and the property owner is real happy about it. So, that worked out good. Exciting news, I say we, the county, this afternoon closed on the property for the Pearl Beach Park, or Pearl Beach, the Beach Park, and they closed on it this afternoon, and we have meetings set up first and second week of January to start talking about the design and the engineering and get the ball rolling on that. So, that's exciting news. Everyone knows we're working and doing the engineering on a wireline replacement along the main M29, and part of that is we want to put in a second feed to Harson's Island. And we have, I have, it was tough to get, we talked to a few people, but I have a verbal commitment right now on the easement to make that happen to, so we can tie in the main going under the river into the water main over on the island. So, that's a big step for that project. Once we have all the documents signed, it will come to this board for approval. Let's see, oh, I'm not sure if you saw it, but a car drove through the fence at our cemetery, off Cemetery Road, and left a big hole in our fence and damaged one of the headstones, which I think we were able to stand that up, and wasn't a whole lot of damage to that, but lots of lawn damage on it. And we're working with our insurance company in there, and tracking that down, but we were just told that the problem is our fence, we can't get parts of that until maybe June, and so we're gonna have another gate till June, at least. With the high winds that we had this past week, we did have a lot of wires and trees down, and we did lose a big pine tree in our park. And boy, I thank God during that is, if the water dropped, otherwise, we would have had a significant flood event during that time with those high winds that we had. So, that was, that was, thank God. I've been doing a lot of work with Dave Van den Bosch, our county commissioner, for emergency sirens, and also a transfer switch for our generator that supplies the police and the township during power outages. We have, right now, we have three emergency sirens in the township, and they're along M29. The DDA actually paid for them, and it's been a goal mine, and I know George's, to get the whole township covered with that, and it's gonna take approximately six sirens. And we had in our budget to do quite, quite a large bit of it this coming year, but Dave Van den Bosch came to us and said he wanted to make it a county project and bring Cotterville and Ira and China, China into, into the loop of it, and cover a large area of South St. Clair County. And so, after working with him and talking with him, the county is actually gonna pay for two-thirds. So, we're going to, we've been negotiating with it and everything, so we're looking at six new sirens, and exactly where we're gonna put them, we're not, because we're doing some, working with, like Cotterville, like they're willing to put one near the state park, which would cover North Clay. So, we don't need one there now, and, but, you know, we'd like to help Cotterville and the other end to cover part of their, their section, their, kind of like trading, trading it out, see which makes more sense. So, we're looking at three or four on the island, and then two or three on the mainland. And what entails, I gave, we gave the guys other possible places where we could have them installed, where the township owns property, but our intention is to cover most, if not all, the township, including the bays where people will go boat and swim. So, we've been working on that, and actually, the timing for, to have this happen is actually this spring, hopefully before the big storms come, you know, in the, in the summer, so. And we've been doing a lot of research and looking for funding opportunities for our water main project and our sewer interceptor project, and actually been talking with Gary Peters and his office quite a bit on it, and I'm gonna meet with him towards the end of January, beginning of February, to see how we can get some of this money from the infrastructure bill back to our local governments here, and how that works. With anything with the government, there's strings attached to them, and hopefully, he'll have that all figured out by then. So, that's all I have for supervisor's report.
I got a question. Can I get a copy of that, because it wasn't in my packet?
Oh, there you can have that one.
I don't know who else got a copy, but I did.
Okay, public comments, have public comments, and I want to recognize Blair. You want to come up, Blair? Blair and Dave, they're the guys doing No Limits Fishing.
Good evening. Blair Hughes reside at 9869 Willow Court, Clay. Just wanted to take a few minutes, and if anybody who's not familiar with what we're doing as they talk, there's some literature right there on the table you can get. I'm Blair Hughes, the president of No Limits Fishing Adventures, and what we are is a nonprofit that, we take special needs kids, disabled vets, folks that are handicapped or have mobility challenges. We take them out on Lake St. Clair to St. Clair River, we take them out fishing in either three to four or six-hour charters. It's a no cost for those individuals that participate, so everything is free to those individuals, the families, the people that go. And today, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you guys for your support. We started last year at this time. It took us several months to source a boat manufacturer that wanted to get on board. When we did that, then it was, holy cow, where are we gonna put it, where are we gonna work out of, and not to, none of the commercial marinas anywhere around here wanted anything to do with us. And so, fortunately, at the Pearl Beach Fishing Pier, there was an opportunity there. You guys all stepped up, we did our presentation to you and developed a partnership, and at the time, we had no idea that there was plans for a handicap park to go there, so as it turns out, it's a perfect tie-in for what we're doing. What I have for you guys today is just some pictures. We, we were supposed to launch early in May or June, as we told you guys when I presented, but thanks to COVID and supply chain and whatever, just like you just said, Artie, you gotta wait till June for parks. We waited all summer long to get a lift. We had to get a special-made lift to elevate the tri-tune. We have a 30 foot, or 28-foot tri-tune that we fish out of that's been specifically modified. We can carry two wheelchairs on the vessel, but at any rate, it took all summer, we never got the lift in till late August. So, you see those pictures that I'm showing you there, the future, or the plans are, on that second page, you can see a, kind of a blueprint diagram of the railing system that we're gonna put up to protect the vessel, and also anybody that wants to use a dock, you know, for their enjoyment, to fish off the dock, et cetera, so. And then that last page is just giving you a visual example of the type of railing that we're using. It's a powder-coated anodized aluminum. We use it all the time in our business, barrier-free plus, when we're doing modifications and things of that nature. So, basically, just wanted to thank you guys for your support. We're gonna do a launch, so we'll have more media there in April. We plan on starting charters in May. I will tell you, this year, we had four or five lined up that we kind of had to put on hold till next year because we couldn't get out in the water. The main challenge is safely loading a wheelchair or a person that has a disability from the dock to the vessel. Once we've got that figured out, we just couldn't get it all done in time, because the main thing was getting that lift in, so we'll keep you posted. Just wanted to say thank you for your support. Thank the community for your support, any of you that, a lot of you know what we're doing and have shown support, and have a great holidays, guys. Any questions?
Thank you, Blair. Congratulations.
If anybody wants to see some of the literature, I'll leave copies on the table.
Hey, Blair.
Yes, sir.
Do you think you'll have a need to put a bench near this, because I could probably get a bench donated by a service organization?
Yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, that whole area, like where the power's at.
Right.
Kind of there, we're kind of thinking, hoping we could.
Yeah.
Definitely wanted, that's where we'll do a launch, and, you know, have you guys and the community out there and kind of showcase what we're doing.
Talk to you later about.
Yeah, sounds good.
Blair, how do people get in touch with you if they're interested?
Great question. Thank you. You can look us up on the internet, we have a Facebook page at No Limits Fishing, or if you want, you can get on our website, it's nolimitsfishing.org.
Okay.
And all the information's there, my cell phone's there, Dave Malkovich is right there, the owner, Barry Freeze, my partner. You can reach out to us, and we'll do what we can to help you.
Great, great.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I just wanted to say how, sorry, Jim Newman, 7650, South Channel, Harson's Island. I just want to say I'm really disappointed in, I guess, a board. You got one person up here that's now standing up, trying to do what's right for the people, and it went yes, 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 and then as soon as Artie said no, we had three locksteps, and it's really disappointing. I have a question for you, Cindy. Did she come to you to try and get it on the agenda today?
She did.
And you could not accommodate, there was no way of getting this information to whoever needed it?
She did not provide me any information specifically. She asked about it. I told her if she wanted to forward it with, to me, I would try and get it to Artie. She sent an email to Artie, and Artie advised her, he didn't have a chance to look at it, but she could request it at the board. With having no documentation, it not being a part of our business meeting, I'm not gonna vote yes to vote to discuss something I have no knowledge of.
To discuss? Again, we get into this, we were only gonna discuss things, we weren't really voting on anything, but when Artie wants to discuss something, it goes on the agenda, no problem, no questions asked, nobody else can know about it, and it goes. Just now, he did an entire report, and nobody had a copy of it. How did that get in? We're tired of this nonsense, you guys? There's a lot of people out here that are ready to start making movements on our end to take care of this mess, since you guys aren't. And if you guys want to join him, like you always do, that's fine, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other comments?
Dan Newman, 4460, Middle Channel. Just a question for Artie. We have problems getting back and forth to the island. I have a question, why, why it's never brought up, and it's, we have an issue, we have people waiting 45 minutes to get home from a long day at work, trying to get home to their family, and to sit in line for 45 minutes so they can get home and see their family and their kids is absolutely ridiculous, is probably, is the best word I can think of, nicely, okay? Why is it that it's never brought, brought up in this group of people, and especially the group on the right-hand side?
Because the township has no jurisdiction or anything or control.
That's bullshit.
Over the ferry.
That's bullshit.
Okay, thank you for your comment. You asked a question, I answered it.
I have another question for you. I want to, are these folks, I'd like to know the relationship between these folks, family-wise, sometime, too. Not these, the three.
What are you insinuating?
On the right-hand side. I'm insinuating that it's family. That's what I'm insinuating, and I'll say it.
Good luck in your research. Good luck.
I'm just, I'm asking a question, I'm asking a question. I'd like to see the result, I'd like to see the answers to that.
Email me, come see me, I'll get all that straightened out for you.
Why is it that you're not doing something about it, Artie? We got a problem here that's not being taken care of. Just because it's your brother, why isn't he being fined every day for having a goddamn holdup of 45?
Watch your language.
All right. Why isn't he being fined for holding up 45 minutes on that highway? You know what's gonna happen? Somebody's gonna open their door, sitting in line, to go talk to somebody else or to see what the heck's going on, and they're gonna get hit or killed or something, waiting in that line, because you and your family cannot get together and resolve something on it. This is absolutely, absolutely ridiculous.
Thanks for your comments, I'll reply to you later.
Thank you, Dan.
I have a comment.
Come out up and state your name and the address.
Stacy Williams, 205 Beauregard. I want to know what the township is doing to protect us from waiting in a ferry line that is a public road, that is not privately owned, and we're blocking people's driveways, and cars are flying by us, waiting in that line, all the way down. My vehicle rocks back and forth. I don't know who's coming by at 10 o'clock at night, you know, it's dark, and everyone habitually shuts off their headlights, as we're supposed to, and they do that in the line before they turn. It's not their fault, it's so that they can figure out all the new vehicles and how to turn them off. I've seen it happen, I've been scared, and on the other side, too, is past the water station and so forth, also county roads, public roads, Clay Township roads.
Michigan State Police now controls and regulates the ferry, so you might want to call them and let them know of the dangers.
Right, so it's scary. My daughter's in the cars, and my vehicle's rocking.
Right, the township.
You know, she shouldn't be scared, I mean, it's scary enough.
Yeah, the township really can't do anything but, Michigan State Police, they're the ones.
Why are you smiling, Artie Bryson? Why do you think that's funny? I think you should take this seriously. My, do I still have a little bit of time on my three minutes? It's very scary.
We understand. But the Michigan State Police.
Yeah, the township can't help us.
If they start.
And all those people who live in those houses should be here saying something, too, it blocks their driveways, and I try not to block them, because I know they're trying to get home, you know, and then I get honked at.
Well, House Bill 4807-2 that was created by Senator Dan Lowers, we can ask him to amend that so that we can get more, some more regulations.
Yes.
So, that's, you know, these are your options.
But it's never been brought up before, the danger. Dan Newman just said it.
Right.
That's the first time I've heard it, but I wanted to be more explicit about it. It's scary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nancy Mcrow, 5260, Middle Channel. If you got a bill passed, or put on a bill from Dan Lowers, why can't you redo it with him again? You had fundraisers for him? You were there, your brother was there, everybody was there. Come on, that really looks like a conflict of interest to me.
Yeah, I'll address that later.
Okay, I think you should. But could you do that for us, the board? Could they work with somebody so they can put it on a bill that, that MDOT or somebody, MPS should be controlling this? It's, it's, we have, he has no competition, just like utilities. Michigan Public Service Commission's job is to oversee people or businesses that have no competition, but because it's on the water, and it's a highway, it's a state highway, one end and the other, so Artie, if you could do something like that, you will be in office forever. And our little island, that I've been out there 43 years, is shrinking. It is shrinking, and why do you think it's shrinking? Nobody can get there? I was worried that my family, we had Christmas yesterday, that they weren't gonna be on time. I didn't know when to start the food, when to put it on the table, so we have to work this out, we really have to. Everybody has to work together.
Thank you.
And I'd like to see more Harson's Island people on the board, especially Whitey, I think he belongs there.
Hi, Donna Holocoglu, 898 North Channel Drive. I understand the state police controls everything in regards to the ferry, but what about the blight that is by the ferry? I mean, there are codes, there are regulations, and I'm telling you, no builder could ever get away with as long as that is looked. It's an embarrassment, it's shameful. When we have guests visiting us, why have there been no sites? I know that there was another construction company, or what was it? I can't remember the name of the company that had by the barber shop. They, they were sighted, they had to put up a fence around, it was a marina. Now, why has that not happened over there?
Because all those materials are for the job site that, right there, that's going on.
But if you were building a home, you would not be allowed to do that for that period of time. I don't believe that is in the, in the regulations, that you could do that. No one could build a garage that long.
Well, and also, it is commercial property, too. So, there's different rules with commercial property.
Okay, well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do have another subject, though, I would like to talk about. While it's clear that there really are very limited stores nearby in Clay Township, factories, whatnot, most people have to drive 40 minutes, 45 minutes plus to get to work. It's impossible to make a 6:00 meeting. Can you please tell me, what do I have to do, a petition or what, to get our meetings back to 7:00 PM? Unless your intention is to have nobody at the meetings, I would like to be. Unless your intention is to have nobody at the meetings, I would like to be able to attend a meeting, as would my husband, who cannot make it because he cannot make it on time. What do I need? Should I get a petition? How do we get it on the agenda to have it voted back to start again at 7 o'clock like it always has?
Well, thank you for your comments, and we can talk about it at a board meeting sometime.
No, do I need a petition to get it on the agenda?
You can do that.
Can it be on an agenda?
Yes, we can talk, we can talk about it.
Because it's impossible. It's very hard to make a meeting at 6 o'clock when you get off of work at 5:00. Thank you.
Well, can we say we'll discuss it at the next meeting? Is that a matter?
Can you?
Maybe we'll talk about it some other time.
Try that?
Thank you. Because I don't understand why it was changed. Can there be a reason why it was changed? What was the reason?
I motioned for it to be changed to 6 o'clock, and the majority of the board agreed with me.
It was so the employees didn't have to stay longer.
Well, and a lot of people are working from home, and we were doing Zooms and...
Well, a lot of people don't work from home. A lot of people don't work in Clay Township. And a lot of people drive almost an hour. And it's really hard. So, thank you.
It used to be 7:30, then we, 7, I mean, maybe 6:30, maybe we can do something like that.
Well, most townships do not have meetings that start at 6:00. I went online and looked.
Okay.
I can give you a list of those if you want them, but most of them start at 7:00.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Verchev, 739 South, North Channel. Artie, you keep saying, you know, this whole bridge and ferry is out of your control. Why wouldn't you want to help us? We're stuck over there on the island. We're part of this community also. And we never get any help from you as far as our situations with the ferry or any of that. We just don't get it. I would think you'd want to include everybody in your community to be on your side, and you just don't do it. You just don't do it.
You know, we actually...
And I understand you can't please everybody. I get that. But we get no help. We're just an island out there by ourselves.
Okay. I'll, like I say, I'll address this later in the meeting. And I'll tell you what I tried in the past.
No, we don't care.
And where we are.
Help us. Instead of battling with us.
I'm not battling.
Well, you're not giving us any help.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comments?
All right, good evening. My name is Kathy Schweichhardt. I am a citizen of Clay Township, and have been a member of Harsons Island for the past 45 years, raised my family here. I have sat on the Planning Commission for 15-plus years. Started out as a board member, went to classes, very quickly went to being a secretary for the Planning Commission, up to vice chair, and now chairperson for the last five years. Re-elected by the members of the Planning Commission, past and present. I was unable to be here for your December meeting that was held on the 6th due to I tested positive for COVID. Therefore, I would have been more than happy to be here to try to respond to some of your inquiries. But instead, I'm doing it now. I've been through this process, been spending a year dealing with this board, in particular Artie. I've reached out to Joanne in the past. And here I sit, looking at people staring at me. So I'm going to read instead.
Excuse me, Kathy, can you turn your mic up more towards your mouth?
Sorry. I'm sorry. So instead, I'm going to read, because a year ago, along with other members of the Planning Commission, supplied at least 50 pages of material to every one of the persons sitting on this board. And to this date, other than Maureen, I've had no questions. I've had discussions with Artie, they don't always go well, because I don't always agree with his opinion. So I'm going to start by reading. And I apologize in advance, I really truly have tried to pare this down, but there is so much that has been said. "December 2020 was my request for reappointment to the PCU and was sent to Clay Township Supervisor Artie Bryson. Despite several attempts for communication, this request went completely unacknowledged. I only learned of Artie's decision to not support my reappointment when reviewing the Board of Trustees' agenda," which we just found out tonight, that's where everything has to be. "Artie, your FYI was not on there. I checked the board agenda. I digress." At any rate, once reviewing the Board of Trustee agenda where he had recommended new individuals as replacements for the PC, I now stand here a year later, December 2021, and I again find myself in the same position, having my request for appointment ignored and dealing with Artie's quote "plan for revamping," in particular, the Planning Commission members' status, specifically number of members on the board going from nine to seven, which has been the number since at least November of 1965. And I just recently found out, has also been the number, number of members for Ira Algenak, Rain City. "There is no doubt in my mind that Artie's desire to eliminate seats from the PC Planning Commission is another operative to get rid of me and at this point, Whitey Simon. The last go-around regarding appointments saw Harold Bane replaced, and the reasons Artie stated at that time turned out to be unfounded or half-truths of what he was accusing Mr. Bane of and the basis for him not supporting Mr. Bane's reappointment. I have continued throughout 2021 as an active member of the PC as a chairperson, as has been Whitey Simon as our secretary. Christine Holcomb is the vice. She's not up for reappointment till next year, so we'll see what it brings next year. And we will continue to do so until we are replaced or eliminated. That's the way the rules work, it's the rules that govern how we all function. If Artie Bryson had people that quote "fit his plan or vision," I am sure he would once again bring forth their names for the Board of Trustees to consider his replacements, as he did last year. However, this time Artie has chosen a different method to reach his goals by asking to downsize the members of the PC and insert himself on the board. Although now, per his email I received today, 2020, quote, "Artie, I have no desire to sit on the Planning Commission. If asked, I would respectfully decline," end quote. Apparently after several conversations with the Township Planner Stephen, or Steve, I'm sorry, and Township Attorney Ms. Anderson, this is the plan that Artie has come up with. No matter how this plays out, as far as the member size, membership size of the PC is concerned, Artie Bryson cannot sit on the Planning Commission as a member. As Township Supervisor, this is just not allowed. Think about it. Members for the Planning Commission are brought to the Board of Trustees per the recommendation of the Supervisor Artie Bryson. Those rules that are in place and we need to follow them. The Board of Trustees can approve or not approve any of his recommendations. They have the power to make that decision and do not have to support anyone simply because they were recommended. A supervisor cannot nominate themselves. Don't take my word for how the system works. I would encourage everyone present to please take this time to check for yourselves. The Board of Trustees really does need to start asking more questions. If you go to the Township website, there's something called the Principles of Township Governance of Excellence. It was signed the last, according to our website, on June 19, 2017. There's 10 bullet points. And it's this pledge of this Township Board to the citizens who you represent and have been elected to.
We just signed that last month, again.
Thank you.
It wasn't on the website. Probably just didn't update it yet.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I just went off the website.
They're currently in training because they had changed our login to the website.
But just so they know, we did sign it, you know, 2021.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Point out, I know there's 10 bullet points. One I would say is "Treat all persons with dignity, respect, impartiality without prejudice or discrimination." I find that hard to imagine when I look at the reappointments that have occurred over the past year and a half. "Practice openness and transparency in our decisions and actions." Just go back and review any of the meetings. As far as short-term rentals would be my example. The motion was already made, already filled out, who was in attendance, and the attorney representing short-term rentals, Gary, I obviously said his last name wrong, Dunder Nalik, was waving a piece of paper saying, kind of nice people. You already had the vote and nothing was done. Guess what? You were supposed to talk about it that night. Instead, on the Township website, is already filled out who voted and who was present. I'm sorry. I question what's happening. And I do realize that there's been a new system put in place as far as how you do your minutes and everything else. Those are big problems. It really is.
You also realize it was just a template, and there was nothing signed to it, there were no dates put into it that it was passed.
But it does explain to the community at large, the citizens that don't live here and don't have a right to vote, when they turn and look to your website. And when you see on your website what you have posted, it looks like it's a done deal. I deal with my neighbors day in and day out, who pretty much are summer resident, well, summer residents, they're not year-round. And they tell me, hey, your board already approved it, the Township Board already approved it. They have no voting rights. Think about how it looks from our community, not just the people that put you into office here, but think about the other people who don't have a right to vote. You might want to reconsider how you do your agendas. Then we get to refuse to participate in any decisions or activities for personal gain at the expense of the best interest of the township. Mine is going to be the master plan, Artie. You had a meltdown when we tried to get this master plan taken care of, to the point that you and I and our then planner Rod had to listen to you complain about the fact that we put as a vision in the master plan, another way to get to Harsons Island potentially. It's a vision. Don't interrupt me just yet, please.
Okay.
You will talk later, I know you will, you'll always do. So with that being said, I'm going to move on to, that would be your excellence of governance. Apparently, everybody just recently signed. I'm going to move on to, as a definition, what a Planning Commission member's duties are. You can find this in our handbook. "Along with the other appointed and elected officials in our community, members of a Planning Commission accept responsibility to protect the personality and vitality of your community. To carry out their duties, these volunteers must digest a mountain of information and negotiate a maze of delicate situations." This might be one of those delicate situations. "This means that the members of the commission represent the various interests found in the community, such as professionals, business owners, and homemakers. In theory, this allows a planning commissioner to act without the political consideration that influences our elected officials." Back in January of this year, because of what happened with reappointments or non-reappointments, there was a few of us on the Planning Commission membership at that time, put together, and I personally submitted to you in writing, so you would have it for your meetings, basically an eight-page-long synopsis of what has occurred. I'm not going to reread it, it's not, it doesn't make sense. But I would like to point out, Planning Commission member, Planning Commission meetings since approximately March of 2020 had been held by Zoom. They resumed live in June of 2021, approximately. Truly seems to have fallen apart when we had a Planning Commission meeting on 12/9/20, and at that meeting, the master plan item, which was us approving it for the Planning Commission, setting of the 2020 meeting dates and election officers were all held. Unfortunately, that's when my meeting ends up with Artie and Rod, because Artie was not happy with what happened at that meeting. We then went back to the drawing board, as far as, again, the bridge and a vision, please remember, this is a vision. And we had to, again, go back, Mark was sitting on the board at the time, and re-adopt again, republish again, to make sure for transparency's sake that we were transparent. Not a problem. We can do that. We did that. The master plan was then adopted by the PC on 3/24/21, and the Board of Trustees approved it on 4/5/21. Mind you, funding for any of that that occurred took us years from this board to get approval to move forward on that. One way or the other, Planning Commission has no funding to proceed with master plans, rock plans, or any of this such. And Artie even knows this. "Length of time in making decisions. Last meeting, I guess things were lost in purgatory, according to Mr. Bryson. Unfortunately, I, again, I will present this to anybody who wants to read it, it was presented to Planning, or excuse me, the board, last year, all in writing. I have nothing to hide in far as this goes. Unfortunately, the job of the Planning Commission, whether it is in regards to site plans, reviewing and/or amending of ordinances, or creating newer ordinances, is not a quick process at times, and by the rules put in place for those specific items, and to not violate them, there can be frustration on both sides of this process in getting matters completed in a timely fashion. Delays can occur due to the failure of applicants meeting the deadlines and making the changes that we requested by the board, or the applicant making changes to the documentation that was not previously submitted for review by the PC Building Department. At that time, our planners were Gilfels and Webster, but it could be Steve and Cossen and his group. Good example of this would be delay, because I know this was mentioned at the last meeting, blue horseshoes. Lucky we didn't get sued. If anybody here, anybody in this room, would take the time to go back and look at those meetings that we held, because this board pays for somebody to record these meetings, you would see how much time and effort that board, Planning Commission members, put in to try to come to some ground to make this work for the responsible development of our community. He easily, or their development could easily have had a restaurant at any time they wanted, what the difficult hang-up was, was the special land use. We spent hours and hours going over that, coming back with the applicants who don't submit on time, and you have the audacity to say, you're lucky we didn't get sued? We spent a ton of time. Anybody can sue us. We're not suit-proof. Anybody can file a lawsuit. As far as an ordinance, within the past couple of years, there was a complete overhaul as of 8/5/20 of our ordinances. And the board still has ordinances that are returning for further review, et cetera. Ordinances are a living document that are continually developing and/or changing based on the community's ever-changing trend in character of land, building, and population. I guess at this point, I'm just going to say that the flow of how things come in front of a Planning Commission starts in the Buildings Department for site plans, in case anybody doesn't understand this. Or et cetera, site plans, et cetera, and then moves to, at that time, Gilfels and Webster, at this time, it's Steve Cossen, and then to the Planning Commission in general. As far as ordinances, that can come from different sources, such as the Building Department, the community, citizens, et cetera. The Planning Commission makes recommendations and passes it on to the Board of Trustees for their approval, or not on the items that are not required. I'm going to go to our meeting that was held for the Planning Commission on October 27. At that meeting, we did training. Steve provided 45 minutes worth of training for us, which was very helpful. We have new board members that I'm sure are appreciative about that. And it's always a good refresher for the rest of us. At that meeting, it was brought to our attention that the fence ordinance came back to us. And some of this, hopefully, Maureen, I've answered your questions, and during your part of it, you can answer those questions, because otherwise, I'm going to be up here a lot longer than I don't want to be.
I'll answer. I'll answer. Well, they were Artie's questions.
Who's our questions they were? It's for the community. Those questions will be answered.
We need to share the information.
Absolutely. After our meeting, I contacted personally Steve, our planner, wanted to make sure that we were okay having a joint training for all the boards. Now, they were back live and in person, and we're catching up, I would hope. In the new year, we decided, January, if I would probably be a good idea. And he would put together some presentation for the boards. We also are working on the fence ordinance that got sent back to us. And he also said he, along with Karen in his office, were working in Parks and Rec. They, Steve said he was going to get together with Gary, who does, Gary in the Building Department does attend our Planning Commission meetings, which is very helpful. And they would come up with some proposals. That meeting was on October 27. Our next meeting for Planning Commission was scheduled for November 10. I reached out to Steve. I also reached out to Cindy Babish, who's my go-to person in the township. Everything funnels through her and that office, and she does a terrific job. It's very time-consuming, because she's not doing just us, she has a ZBA also that she deals with. And it came to my attention that Gary and Steve had not had time to really get together. Their schedules are busy, they have other things to do. Really didn't make any sense to have a meeting on November 10. We just had a meeting on October 27. I'm like, fine, we can cancel the meeting, no problem. In the past, I've been at meetings, not when I've been chair, but meetings where we show up, we take two minutes, take roll call, nothing to do, meeting's adjourned. You just now, as a community... You just now, as a community, cost the taxpayers $40 or $50 per person who are sitting there to do what? Approximately three years ago, it came to my attention that instead of canceling meetings all the time, because really, the planning commission only has to hold four meetings a year by law, instead of canceling meetings all the time, putting an additional burden on your Building Department, why don't we go down to one with the understanding that if there's anything that needs to be brought before that one time in that month, please, call me. I will be more than happy to schedule a special meeting, and/or any two members of our board could do that, too. We're not trying to hide anything, and we're not trying to leave everything in purgatory. And then move on to, anybody can go over to Cindy in the Building Department. I have a list, as of December 6, of the many items that apparently are stuck in planning commission. As it turns out, we were very busy for the year of 2020, and you board members all receive a summary at the end of the year, well, actually be January now, for the previous year, of what the planning commission has done. At present, currently in the Building Department, we have two matters that are waiting for review by our planner, and the recreation plan update is about three-quarters of the way finished. We then go to the future. There are some zoning tax amendments, which I just explained, our living, breathing items that change. We have some clarification on some shipping containers that we've already, if you look, have approved, and has gone in front of this board for approval. We have some rezoning potentially for the new park. Have to speak with our planner to see if that's something that we have to do. Also, Gary, or excuse me, also Steve and our attorney have been working on small cell two-part towers. Then we go to the South Channel, 5555 South Channel. The township, a few years back, sued the particular owner at that point because of suckin' barges and boats and, so that ended up in a lawsuit, and we put that on the back burner until that lawsuit was taken care of, because we're looking at the rezoning of that. And then we have the land division ordinance of 128. Per our engineer, which is John Monti, says we should probably look at an update. It is not causing anything not to be done officially in this community in Clay Township, but it's something that we should now take a look at. So if I look at that, that's five items. On hold at the moment is room-to-run dog boarding. They just submitted a site plan filing. That'll be the next. Rose Marine Site Plan, he's not happy about fees that he's been required to pay, and he just refused to pay them, according to the Building Department. Please don't take my word for this. Go talk to your Building Department. Walk across the hallway, or come in and ask. Then we have Danny's gas pump that we approved, and due to economic constraints, is on hold. Sensation are looking to do an addition, which we've dealt with them in the past, but they're on hold. At this point, we really have five items that maybe we could address, and that's it. So then I move forward to, at the meeting on December 6, was Artie mentioning about, the rec plan will not be ready, and he's correct, it won't be. It will expire at the end of this year. We have Karen and we have Steve working on it. Was the first, to my knowledge, that we had a problem with it. Steve, who is with Casson Planning Group, came on board in June, when our previous planners were not rehired, along with our previous attorney not rehired. And he's been trying to catch up, which you can imagine, and get on board with what's going on. When Steve submitted his proposal to you, and we got notification as board members that they were now our planners, included in my packet, it was a proposal for planning consultant fees. I'm not going to read all of this, but what I would like to point out is other services. All services not listed above will be charged at a rate of $80 per hour. Specific projects such as recreation plans, master plans, et cetera, will be prepared at a rate determined in advance by both the township and the consultant. The reason I read that is, at the last meeting, Artie was not happy with the planning commission not taking care of the rec plan. Again, I wasn't present, so the next morning, I'm on the phone with Cindy, trying to figure out if I'm correct. We've been working on it. Talked to Steve, or left a message for Steve. Steve got back with me on 12/14/21 and said, yeah, we've been working on it. Karen's been doing a good job, and doing what we're supposed to do. But in his words, because I asked him, how would you phrase this? His words is, the matter's on hold. And I'm like, why is the matter on hold? Well, the matter is on hold because I sent to Artie, for the board's consideration, a $1,500 fee that will be assessed or charged by their group to do this rec plan. Planning commission has no ability to request funding. You very well know how this works, master plan, or rec plan, or any of the above. Then I'm like, okay, that, that makes sense. Then I get to, sorry, a lot of paper here. Then I get to an email that shows up. That was Thursday. No, that was Tuesday, the 14th. I then get an email dated Saturday, December 18. Kathy, and this is from Steve, our planner, attaches a proposed scope and timeline for the Parks and Rec Plan. Please review it with the PC, Planning Commission, and advise me of any changes. I did receive formal, I did receive formal authorization to proceed this past Thursday, and as I indicated on the phone, we have already started gathering the required demographic information. So I'm not sure what happened, Artie, but it sounds like you guys were talking, and now we have the funding to propose, to move ahead with our recs plan, which I'm glad to know. With that in place, I have, it's a four-page document that was submitted for the proposed Clay Township Parks and Recreation Plan, Work Plan and Timeline. Steve's group laid out the timeline. I'll just basically say we can start in January, and everything goes smoothly. If everything goes smoothly, we should be done by June. This includes public hearings and collection of data. So hopefully, that answers your question where the rec plan is. Maureen approached me, because there was questions, I wasn't at the last meeting, and I responded, maybe not as timely as I should have, but there was a lot of information to gather in regards to this board's questioning, what was going on, so I did so.
Well, you were sick, too.
Yeah, I was sick, but I was sick, and I had to go through a lot of papers. But be there as may, here I am. Then I receive today, Monday, December 20, 8:47 a.m., from Artie to Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission. I'll just summarize. Hello, boards. Had several conversations with our planner and attorney. They both told me that the optimal, optimal, excuse me, number of board members for a community, our size is seven. Maybe optimal, but our only other boards around here are at nine in our local community. Artie goes on to cite that he spoke with the attorney, that apparently, the concerned citizens who hired an attorney for the last go-around, which we did not know was happening, until Thursday at, what, 6:30, 7 o'clock, the agenda finally got posted for the December 6 meeting. It was a scramble for the concerned citizens to try to figure out what we're doing. Apparently, our attorney for the township says it holds no water. I have had, I have not had time to verify any of this. I'm just going with what's in this email. Then we go to, the question to change the number of planning commission to seven is on the advice of our planner and our attorney. Okay? It's advice. It's not something that has to happen, nor do these people live in our community. You should probably listen to our community and its members.
That's why you're having a public hearing.
If you let me finish, I'm getting to that. I, I've tried to make this as organized as I can, because I realized this is not as easy to make it concise. And you smile, go right ahead and smile. I don't know what's so funny, as the last person said. My question would be, that's fine. We can have a public hearing, which is going to be scheduled. But as has occurred to me in the past, we have a public hearing. We make recommendations from Planning Commission, because Planning Commission is a recommending board. We send it on to the Board of Trustees, and sometimes you go with it, and sometimes you don't. But I've had numerous conversations with Artie, saying, my board won't do this, and my board won't do that. Is there other discussions going on, other than we're sitting here? I don't know. It's, 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 his phraseology is, the board, my board, of planning, of, excuse me, I'm confusing, of the Board of Trustees. It's the community's board. And I think that's what these members here in this audience are asking, is these elected officials, would you please, please, take the time to review this information? It's a lot. I know it's difficult. I did not enjoy having to pull this all together. Mark is our board rep. At times, I'm sure it's a daunting experience trying to deal with this, and then getting in a tit-for-tat, for God only knows what reason or something. We're all supposed to be here for our community. That's what we're supposed to be here for. Put our personal whatever aside, and just do what you're supposed to do, your job. So now, I get to, well, I'll just gloss over the annual report. Like it or not, because of COVID, we ended up having to do a lot of Zoom meetings. People were not happy necessarily with that. It was a great experience in some respects, and horrible experience in others. But it did allow the community who did not want to spend the time to come out at night to participate. So we had a lot of different people that showed up. During that time, we managed, as a planning commission, rightly or wrongly, to have a new, at least one new member join us at that point. I think it was Chris O'Toone. I don't think I met him until June, personally. And we took care of a lot of matters. We did six public hearings. We went over offenses, and it's all in the, in this packet that was presented to you this year in January. It's available for anybody's review, not trying to hide anything. We then get to the ZBA decision that occurred recently, and this is another email from Artie, November 2. The way it works is somebody can appeal, or somebody can go to the ZBA. If the person or the people that are at the ZBA do not like the result, it is in the law that they are entitled to take that opinion to the circuit court. We can't be suit-proof. It doesn't happen. We work very hard as planning commission members to try to dot our i's and cross our t's. We're human, and we sometimes do make mistakes, potentially. We rely on our planners, whether it's Steve now, or whether it was Gilfels and Webster at the time, whether it was Sid at the time, whether it's Gary now. And all this information gets funneled through that department, and then goes on to us. I understand, according to this email that Artie sent, that he questioned Gilfels and Webster's how it was crafted, that it was ambiguous, but was told that it was okay as stated. He, Artie, actually thought it was a typo at first. Gilfels and Webster sent to him, Artie, and Gary, the building inspector, their interpretation on it, and for direction, but it was very ambiguous again. My board elected, there's his phrase, my board elected to defund the ZBA decision in an estimated cost of around $4,000. We are now looking at that, again, as a planning commission, and waiting for Gary and the planner to give us some feedback on it. I'm not, I'm not an attorney, therefore, I'm relying on the experts, I hope. I now go to scheduling a special meeting, because the meeting in December for the planning commission got canceled. There was nothing, like in November, that was ready to go for December. So therefore, I need to cancel the meeting a week before. And I coordinate this with Cindy Babish. Rightly or wrongly, it's the system we've set up, and that's how we do it. She is a person in that office that has the most information for me, without trying to personally call Gary every time, or the planner. I do that also, but it makes no sense. I'm wasting people's time. So I started on December 7 to try to make this happen. Cindy pointed out to me, and rightfully so, that we need to make sure we have a recording secretary. We need to make sure we have it being recorded, so we're transparent, because our public, or excuse me, our PC meetings are put on YouTube, wherever they're going, so everybody can view them. We have nothing to hide, and we hope, you board members, if you can't attend a board meeting for the planning commission, review it. I spent two times looking at your December 6 meeting, so I could be up to date and ready to go. I just ask the same from you. If Mark has any questions, maybe Mark can direct you to a certain part of the meeting, so you don't have to watch the whole thing. But it's an option. Needless to say, Cindy worked hard, has got us scheduled for a meeting for tomorrow. Our planner won't be able to be there, because it's short notice. He's working in a different community, but he did provide for us and for your review, the rec outline for what we need to do. I know the motion was made by Cindy Valentine, seconded by Chris O'Regan, and it was basically that we need to schedule a public hearing regarding reducing the planning commission members down to seven. We have no problem doing that. I've also had comments from the audience, or audiences, that we should probably be mindful of the fact that our community, a lot of people leave and go south. Do we really want to do this at this particular time of year? I don't know. I guess that'll be a discussion for tomorrow's meeting. In the end, I also have data, if we do decide for tomorrow's meeting, that we should schedule the public hearing. Cindy, again, very graciously took the time and energy, because of the holidays, when would be the closest, or as soon as we could schedule it. If that were the case, it may not be until the end of January. I don't know. We will have our discussion tomorrow. But with that being said, I really do realize I've gone over six minutes, or whatever the time limit would have been. I appreciate you listening to me, because my past experience in submitting documents, I question whether anybody's reading them. I don't know. Mark, I appreciate your effort in trying to explain to the board at times what's going on, but watching meetings, sometimes, I don't think you have a chance. When other people question, it's not to be negative. It's to work for the betterment of our community. And I really think all of us need to step back and remember that, at this particular point, because these people in this audience, and everybody else who's going to watch this, are the community that have us here to do what we need to do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Any more public comments? Any more public comments? Any more public comments? All right, moving right along. We have the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, consisting of the minutes from December 6, 2021, the check reports from 12/6 of 2021, the payables in between meetings of 12/6 and 12/2021, and a request from the Assessing Department, a renewal of annual memberships in the amount of $345.
Okay, have motion and support. Any questions, changes? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fire chief report. Do we have a?
No.
I didn't think so. Take that off. We heard from chief last week, or last meeting. All right, new business. Tammy, we have our annual audit report from UHY, presentation our, our auditors. And I did forward, I think, the board get an email with the rough draft of the audit about a week and a half ago.
And this evening, I did pass out packets. So you'll have a blue binder here. This is the audited financial statements. And then included in the back of the binder, there are two reports that are also issued, the independent auditor's report, and then there's an audit communication letter. So instead of going through the binder, which we've done with the clerk, the treasurer, and the supervisor for a draft meeting, I passed out an audit presentation. This is pretty similar to what we've passed out in prior years. And it's just a little bit quicker way of synopsis of going through the information and highlighting some of the key points. So if we want to start with the presentation document that I passed out, on the very first page, number one, it talks about the independent auditor's report. And when I'm referring to the document, the document's always going to be this blue, blue cover here. So on pages one and two in that document is your independent auditor's report. And once again, the township has an unmodified or clean opinion, so that's the best type of opinion that a township or municipality could have for an audit. And I just want to point out- And I just want to point out too, that there was one implementation of a new audit standard this year, that was GASB 84. And what that audit standard did was it required, the township has funds that are set aside for post-employment retirement benefits, and they're set aside at MERS. That standard required that to be brought into the township as a fund of the township. So those funds are presented on pages 18 and 19 of that blue book. So if you're interested in looking at that, they're on pages 18 and 19. Bullet point number two, the management discussion and analysis, or the MDNA letter, that you'll see are on pages three through seven. That's a required reporting document in order to get that clean opinion. And basically what that does is it highlights some of the key areas of the audit, and it has a little bit of discussion of potential things that are happening in the township the very last part of it. The third bullet here is your township entity-wide financial statements, and it's presented on the accrual basis of accounting. So page eight is the statement of net position. So you'll see that this presents all of the assets, all the liabilities, and the net position for the township as a whole. So the way that we like to describe this is if you look about three quarters of the way down the page, you'll see that as a whole, the township, if you were looking at it on the commercial way, the township is worth about $21,875,197. So this statement of net position brings in all of the assets of the township and any debt that the township has outstanding. On the next pages, pages nine and 10 that this presentation highlights is your statement of activities. And this, once again, is all of the activity that flows through the township for the whole entire year, that being July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021. Now, if we get into the next bullet point, which is four, you'll get into the individual funds of the township. The first being the general fund, that seems to be the major fund of the township where most of the activity flows through. And I'll just highlight what your total assets were, $2,281,512. Your liabilities were $72,681. And as of June 30th of 2021, your fund balance in your general fund was $2,208,831. And then this presentation handout does have a comparison total, so you can see that next to what the activity was for 2020. So you'll see that your fund balance did go up. That's number two down below, the statement of expenditures and changes in fund balance. It shows your total revenues, your expenditures, other financing sources and uses, to get to a total change in the fund balance. So this year, your general fund increased in fund balance $32,804. Now, in addition to having the general fund, the township does maintain various other funds. And that on page two, number, or letter B, special revenue funds, this lists all of the other funds of the township that are special revenue funds, your fire fund, your police fund, rubbish collection, drug enforcement fund, your Oaklawn Cemetery Fund, Music in the Park Fund, the Rogue Canal Maintenance Fund, your Parks and Rec Fund, and your for Magnet Program Fund. So you can see what happened in each of those funds, if they had an increase or decrease in your fund balances. Number two bullet point there does show comparison once again for the fund balance. It's the ending fund balances at the end of June 30th of 2020 and 2021. So you can see if they increased or decreased from one year to the next. And then the township also does maintain the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, which is listed there as number C. And really that had total revenue of $2,809 for the year, with the ending fund balance of $76,397. On page three are the highlights of your debt service fund, which actually, this fund was used to maintain the activity for the Colony Road Assessment Bond, which was paid off this past year, well, actually the year, last year. So there isn't any activity in that fund, there's just a remaining fund balance of $18. Bullet point number E, or letter E, your enterprise funds. This consists of your water supply and your sewer disposal system funds. And once again, you'll see side by side, your water fund and your sewer fund, your operating revenues, expenses for the year, your depreciation expense, your operating loss, any non-operating revenues and expenses, to get to a change in net position. So your water fund for the year increased $211,393, and the sewer fund had a decrease of $219,263. Below that, number two, the cash results, that brings it back to the cash basis. So there's a lot of different information in here that's not actually a cash transaction, for instance, depreciation expense. That's an estimate, it's an expense or a cost or wear, tear in your system, but it's actually not a cash outlay. So that's what number two tries to do there, is to break out the activity. And then number three is your net working capital for both your water and your sewer. And what this does is it takes your current assets less your current liabilities and gives you what your net working capital, or how much money would be available if you wanted to do a project in each one of these funds. And once again, this is as of June 30th of 2021, but your water fund had net working capital of $3,447,564, and your sewer fund had net working capital of $894,966. Page four references the other two reports that I mentioned at the very beginning. So you have your independent auditor's report. So not only do we audit the numbers, but we come in and we look at your internal controls to make sure that you have checks and balances in place. And then our second letter here is the audit communication letter. And what this letter does is it reports key areas of the audit back to the board. We're not required to be here as an accounting firm, but we do like to make the board presentation. But if we weren't here, that's what this audit communication letter would be here to represent. There are a couple of items that we've noted in these letters that we've gone through with management, and my understanding is that they're either in the process of looking at it or have already addressed the issues. So I don't know if you want to go through those or not. Okay. The very first letter is your independent auditor's control letter. The very first item that's noted in there is a material weakness, basically states that you don't have anybody on staff that would draft the financial statements. That would be the numbers and the notes. That's very common. I audit probably 50 municipalities during the year, and maybe 90% of them have this comment in there. It's very rare not to have this comment. And basically, it's because you rely on us as the auditor to keep up with the standards, to know that if there's something that needs to be implemented, like I mentioned earlier, GASB 84 needed to be implemented, that type of thing. You have more than enough people in management or on staff that know that the accuracy of these reports, that the numbers, they go through, they check the numbers back to the trial balances, making sure that everything makes sense in these reports. It's just a formality, basically, in the accounting standard that says you rely on us to draft the financial statements, that you're not drafting them yourself. So that is the only item that is being reported in your independent auditor's report. So other than that, you don't have any other significant weaknesses or material weaknesses. The other report is the audit communication letter, and once again, this highlights certain areas out of the audit binder itself. And if you just want to flip back to the very last page, attachment A. Now, these are just recommendations of either improving your processes or making procedures maybe a little bit easier. The very first one is to review and document the administrative charges between the various funds. And our understanding is this was done a couple of years ago, and it's in the process of being reviewed and documented again. Money is transferred back and forth between funds, and we just want to make sure that you're current on the rates. If anything, you're probably undercharging instead of overcharging because of cost of living and whatnot, inflation, things are going up. So first management comment is to take a look at that. The second item is the revenues should be included in the formal board resolution. So every year as a board, you adopt a formal resolution for your expenditures for each of your funds, which is required by Department of Treasury. And now we're recommending too, that not only do you have the total of all of the expenditures by department, but that we have a total revenue in there too. It's the understanding that you have a balanced budget, that revenues equal expenditures, and the report that's given to support that resolution does show that. It's just kind of a formality that it's listed in there as revenues, X amount, and then each of the department expenditures total X amount. And then the third item is just more of a heads-up type of item. The Department of Treasury has decided in their wisdom to finally, and this has been something that has been in the works for years, that they've updated the chart of accounts. So it's just a heads-up that you should go back and evaluate each of the different funds, making sure that your fund numbers and all of your account numbers are in compliance with the new state chart of accounts. So my understanding is that Christie and Cindy both are taking a look at that, and then they're going to work back and forth with BSNA, your software company, to make that a hopefully easy transition. And then back to the presentation, there are several pages behind that that show the different graphs. The very first one is your general fund revenues by function. And once again, this is comparison. So you'll see that the very top of the form is as of June 30th of 2021, and then the bottom page of the form is June 30th of 2020. And just by looking at it, you'll see that in comparison, most of your revenues are about what they were the year before. And you have to remember though, if one category goes up, another category's got to go down. So in June 30th of 2021, you do have more intergovernmental revenues, so that caused your intergovernmental revenues to go up, so then all the other categories have got to go down a few percentages. On the next page, we do the same thing with your general fund expenditures. So this breaks down the expenditures of just the general fund into different areas by department. For instance, you've got your public safety, public works, recreation and cultural, and then you'll see the biggest part of the pie there is your general government. And then on the next page, we've got an analysis similar, but this is all expenses of the township. So this is not just the general fund, but this includes all of those special revenue funds that we discussed and your water and sewer fund. So you'll see a comparison from June 30th of 2021 and then below that, June 30th of 2020. And once again, they're, they're very similar. I don't think you're going to see that there's too much of a fluctuation, but if one category goes up, another category's got to go down to make that 100%. Any questions?
So, would you say that the financial situation with the township is strong?
I would say that you are in a strong financial position as of June 30th of 2021.
Is there a rating? Instead of just saying strong, is there a rating?
There really isn't a rating. You can see across the board, when you're looking at your, your changes in your fund balances or your fund balance totals, for instance, in your general fund. This year, your general fund was to the positive $32,804. But you look at what your fund balance is, so at June 30th of 2021, the general fund had an ending fund balance of $2,208,831. And of that, only $50,000 of that is assigned for the next year's budget. So that's a very strong fund balance. If you, I'm, I'm looking at page 13 of the blue binder, but if you go about halfway in the middle of the page there, you'll see that your general fund expenditures for the year were $1,906,767. So with a fund balance of $2,208, you could operate for a little more than a year without taking in another dollar, because your fund balance would cover what your cost was at that point in time.
And again, I want to give kudos to our staff and this board and boards prior. About, I don't know, 2014, on back to, long before I ever took office, we had, we always had like eight and 10 to 10 significant weaknesses, Joanne will recall, with the way the township was doing business.
I can vouch for that. I was-
You can vouch for that.
Part of that, the first year we took over the audit.
And we found issues right after I got in office, and I made a promise to the board, the taxpayers, that we were going to get rid of all of our, our-
Bad reports.
Yeah, our nasty reports, our significant weaknesses, by demanding segregation of duties and secondary reviews of all reports and accounting. And even Tammy said, that's a pretty tough thing to do. But within a year, we did it. We changed, we totally changed the way the township did business, is doing business. And I'd like to thank Chrissy and Cindy. It makes our job a lot harder, but it, I wanted to give the taxpayers and our citizens, you know, trust that, you know, there's no shenanigans going on, so.
No.
Yep, and, and thank you. You guys do a thorough audit too. I know, because we always complain about when you're in here.
I know you do. But like I mentioned earlier, not only do we audit the numbers, but we do rely heavily on the controls. Because if the controls aren't in place, then we can't rely on the numbers. So we need to start with the controls. So we go in as auditors and we look at your different processes. We look at your cash disbursements process, we look at your payroll process, we look at your cash receiving process, we look at your utility billing process, just to make sure that there are those segregation of duties, as Artie mentioned, or those checks and balances, that you've got one person looking at this and another person looking at the same document and signing off on it. We're looking for initials, we're looking at two signatures on checks, we're looking at ACHs in the bank account that somebody is reconciling the bank statement, and somebody else is looking at that reconciliation to make sure that that really does work back and forth. So that is one of the key areas that we focus on for the audit.
They test it too.
And unfortunately, a lot of that, I'm sure, came through over the years when they had to reduce the size of staff. So staff was taking on additional duties where we have expanded staff, but for that reason, to make sure we have that separation of duties. And there's definitely more than enough to keep everybody busy, so, but. I think Christie would agree with me that our staff is, they go above and beyond. They, they dig in, they learn their job, and anything else, we ask them to, so.
And everybody is very accommodating when we're in here doing the audit. I know that it's a little bit of an inconvenience, because when we're here, we're asking for a lot of documentation.
Actually, we prefer it when you're here.
Instead of doing it virtually. Believe me, me too. Because of COVID, we've been remote now for this, I think, the second year. And it's hard. It's, it's hard on you and it's hard on us. We have a portal that we try to get all the information in, but it's still a lot of extra work. But what I was going to say is that your staff has been very accommodating and, you know, they, they tried their best to keep up with all the audit requests, and we understand that you've got a day-to-day, you know, things that need to be taken care of, but everybody is always very accommodating.
Thank you guys very much.
The, the new chart of accounts, sounds like it's kind of a big deal.
It's a big deal, but I, I don't think that your, now, I haven't sat down and looked at it line by line, but I don't think there's going to be any significant changes. There might be some account numbers that need to be changed here and there, but I don't think that yours in particular is going to be a drastic change.
We just did ours about, well, when we were-
Yeah, I was gonna-
We did, it's about, what?
2016.
16.
Yeah, I was gonna say, six or seven years ago. It was right after-
It was a big deal then.
We took over, right.
Does your firm offer any consulting guidelines or?
We, we do, and we've been in discussion with management. I think right now Christie and Cindy are going to take it to a certain point, and then we're going to review it. And then we also work back to back with BSNA, because what they'll do is they're not going to tell you right, wrong, or indifferent, but they're going to take the information that you provide them and say, change this to this and change that to that. So then they're going to go back behind the scenes and make sure that all of the prior information is coded the same way. So if we come in a year from now and want to look up an account that might have changed, that they can pull the same information from a year ago, even though the account number's changed. If that makes sense.
And they have six months, we have six months to adopt it? Or six months to adopt and implement?
Both, adopt and implement.
Okay.
Yep.
Next fiscal year.
Right. But you should be considering it too when you're budgeting. A lot of municipalities aren't in the same position that you are, and their chart of accounts might not coincide so nicely with the new chart of accounts, so they might be seeing more of a drastic change. So when they're trying to do their annual budget or forecasting for the next year's budget, they might need to change even their whole budgeting process, where I don't think your municipality is going to have to at this point.
Her OPEP got a lot better too.
It did. You had a very good year in the market for OPEP. There was a nice gain this year.
There's still a little bit lacking on our building, but we did raise our permit fees. I think we lost $36,000 in our building department.
How do we do that?
Huh?
How do we lose money in the building department on permit fees?
Because costs are, you know, greater than revenue for, to run-
So it wasn't that we lost it, we just didn't recover the-
Right.
Elevator-
Elevator, okay.
Yeah. That's why we, that's why we looked at those fees about three months ago. Saw it coming.
There's a historical amount of deficit in the building department.
Yeah, I think-
That didn't add that much to it last year.
I think total, what is it, 1.3 million over, I don't know how many years?
1.4. It's on page 28 of the audit, and it's something that we're required to disclose because your building department is incorporated as part of the general fund. As you know, your rates that you charge can't be more than what your expenses are, so that needs to be monitored. Some municipalities have a separate fund just for the building department. Yours is in the general fund, but it just has to be tracked. So that's what we're doing on page 28, Note 2, at the very top of the page under construction code fees. So this is a synopsis of, I'm not sure how many years, it says January 1st of 2020, so it's quite, or 2000.
Yeah, yeah, 20, yeah.
And it goes back quite a few years. But right now, you'll see that your building department, if it were a fund by itself, it would have a deficit of $1,407,536.
Yeah.
But as already referred to, this year, your shortfall was only $32,402.
So we redose the pain.
The shortcoming, huh?
There. So just wanted to point that out to the board. So and all the other funds actually look pretty good with our budget. All right, any other questions for Tammy or? Yeah, like Joanne says, looks a lot better than when she first started. I'll tell you what's a lot better, and John can contest, is our water. And I know we're still losing money in sewer, but, but water, I mean, when I first got in, they said, you cannot raise rates fast enough and cut costs. And, I mean, it was in big trouble. And now it's, it's rate shape, so. I guess we should make a motion, accept and file?
And then these reports are due to the state, as you know, of December 31st. But we have everything that is already to go. And so all we need to do is, after this is approved tonight, push the button tomorrow morning, and they'll be at the Department of Treasury.
You'll handle that, right?
Yep. The F-65's been done, the qualifying statement, the 5572's for both the pension and the retirement.
Okay.
And they'll all go with the audit tomorrow morning.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept and file the presented audited financial statements from UHY, fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021.
Okay, we have motion support to file, accept and file the audit as presented. Any more discussion? Do I need a roll call on this?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Tell, Merry Christmas, and tell Paul he said, hey.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay. That's good. Next, we have resolution to approve the North Channel Drive West Bridge Resolution for a special assessment. We did have a public hearing on that last, at our last meeting, and we have the resolution to accept this before us.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve and accept Resolution Number 2021-30E, Special Assessment District, North Channel Drive West, Harrison's Island, Private Bridge Improvements.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support. We've had, what, how many public hearings on these? Two, three?
Two.
I have motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, next we have a resolution for the North Channel Drive West paving, to fix the road before and after the bridge that they're fixing. Yes, that's what we just passed. Entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-31E, the Special Assessment District, the North Channel Drive West in Harrison's Island, a private road paving. It's Resolution Number Five.
I'll support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes, motion passes.
Christie Hilton?
Whoops, I'm sorry. Yes, motion passes. All right, next we have Police School Resource Officer Agreement. This would be the first, we had this in place for three years with Elgnack High School, and we're renewing it. Basically, they pay for half of the officer that we have that's in the school system. And he does a great job. And I know the school board passed this, and it's up for question at our board. And it's, it's a great asset. I don't know if you want to go into it or have chief come up and talk about it, but-
I'll make a motion to accept the School Resource Officer Agreement, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Support. All right, we have motion support.
I would just like number 11 stipulated the amount of $43,024.41 is annually. It's not in total for the years 21 through 24. I'd just like that clarified for the contract a little bit better, that's all.
Done.
Annually. Okay.
We still have the same officer assigned to that?
Yes.
Dave.
Yes, Officer Dave.
Ferraro.
He's got a great relationship with the kids.
Yep, he does. He does a good job.
Well worth it.
Either him or Chief Coach, they do give us a update at a timely matter on the progress going on at the school and any other items that come up.
Yeah, we can arrange for that.
Yeah.
I did see at the state level, there's a, they passed a bill that's going to help support resource officers, but I haven't gotten any, any information back on that yet. So maybe we can get some of this taken care of from the state, or I'm not sure how that works, or if it would pay for additional resource office.
I've heard the same thing, but I didn't see the other-
Right. So I just want the board beware of that. We're kind of checking into that, too. So. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have to do this every year is to opt out of the, it's called the 80/20 opt-out. Because we're a public entity, and there's a rule that if we didn't, employees would have to pay for 20% of the health care. And, you know, we have, what, six collective bargaining units, and all of them, we basically tell them that we will opt out of it. We have a separate fees outside of this agreement where we collect for copays and copay, copayments, I guess, of the health insurance. So basically, if we don't do this, we'll probably be in violation about five or six collective bargaining contracts, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-43, the 80/20 opt-out.
Support. Motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have a resolution to, that the county road likes us to pass every year, gives us the right to, for our guys to write, to work in the county right-of-way. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-44. It's a Sinclair County Road Commission Right-of-Way Access, Clay Township in Sinclair County.
We have motion support. Any questions or discussion?
Same thing as last year, right?
Yep. Changed the dates. We have motion support. No more discussion. Call on, or roll call, please.
Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have before us is, we want to raise our tap-in fees for our water department. We went back, come on up, John.
So we just did a year-end review of our materials costs, and we get updates daily on our costs that are coming for 2022. And to be honest with you, we're losing money on our taps currently. So I propose that we raised it to the number you see in front of you, and eliminate the three-quarter inch tap. There isn't a lot of those that come in anymore, and it would, we wouldn't be required to carry that inventory for two different size materials.
What's the percentage of the three-quarter that, I mean, it's like less than 5%?
Probably 10%, Maureen. At best.
And the prices you're looking at is, is our, correct me if I'm wrong, John, is for our material and average labor and equipment.
That's correct.
A lot of communities will do tap-in fees, and then they make the property owners actual contract to do the labor. And it usually comes up a lot higher between their tap-in fees and then paying a contractor to do the work, a lot higher than what we're suggesting we charge. And not only that, we have better quality control when we do it ourselves. Would you agree with that?
I would. I would agree, yes.
And, you know, we make sure it's done right. If there's issues, we know about it. We don't have a third party in there doing shoddy work or hiding work or, or anything else, because, you know, they leave and it's all on their ground. And-
To be clear, this hasn't been updated since 2007.
Right.
That's correct.
We're also not, your proposal discusses the system benefit fee, which we are not changing, and it is not part of this resolution, that $1,000 system benefit fee was a part of the resolution from 2007. The resolution before us today just updates the tap-in fees from that resolution.
Yeah, these haven't been adjusted since 2007. And now you got to use, what is it, the brass, they can't have any lead in it.
No lead brass, correct.
Lot more expensive. And like you say, prices, prices on all that stuff is going up every day. So.
And I would recommend that this be reviewed annually.
Yes, yes.
Based on costs.
We need to review this every year.
John, is there a degree of difficulty in putting a three-quarter tap as opposed to a one-inch tap? Or can everybody put in a one-inch tap without having any other difficulties?
Same process, yes.
So it doesn't make any difference, a one-inch tap is actually better, all around, it just costs more for the pipe.
That's correct.
So eliminate us carrying inventory, separate meters, the whole nine yards. So anyone have any more questions for John? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-46, establishing the meter and service installation fees at $1,900 for one inch.
Okay, we have motion support. Any more discussion with the board? Hearing none, roll call, please.
What did I leave off? Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next we have, we're requesting to hire Ron Darga. How you doing, Ron? Come on up.
So Ron's been with us for seven months now. He was our summer help employee. And as you know, there's going to be a vacancy in the water department soon. So we're going to have to fill that position. And I've got to see Ron, he doesn't bring a real big resume to the table, but I've seen him in action. He is an awesome employee. He's a supervisor's dream, self-starter, good attitude, gets along well with others. I think that he would be a good long-term investment for the township and be a great employee.
Wow, that's a hell of a statement coming from the superintendent of the DPW.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Billy.
So Ron, the only reason that you wanted to come up full-time hiree is because he's leaving?
It's the number one reason.
Number one reason.
Board, I'll make a motion that we elevate Mr. Ron Darga as a full-time employee of our Clay Township DPW.
I'll support.
Support. Do we have any questions for Ron?
This would be for a general labor at this point or a utility worker?
Utility one, I think it is, Cindy, yes.
Utility one?
I've had discuss-
Unlicensed utility.
Right.
Isn't utility one unlicensed, I believe?
Yes.
Unlicensed utility one, and this would be effective January 3rd, 2022?
Yes.
Yep. You going to try to study and get some certifications going?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate that. I've had a few discussions with him. He seems pretty motivated, and, and he's not afraid to get dirty. And I've seen him in action. He'll take it upon himself to go pick up this or clean a mess up. You don't have to tell him to do it. And that's hard to find in today's world.
He's a good mechanic, too, at his age, so.
He's a, you're a gearhead?
Sometimes.
Okay, good.
Do we have support for that, Artie?
Yes, we got Joanne supporting.
Joanne, okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion or questions for Ron? Do you know how to swim?
Yes.
Good. We have to ask. Have to ask. Okay, hearing no more discussion. All in favor of hiring Ron Darga as full-time, effective, was it January 3rd?
Yes.
Yes.
Signify, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Congratulations, Ron. Okay. See, what else do we have on the, oh, our lease agreement. Go ahead, John.
Okay, so this is the same program that Chief Coach brought to you last week for his vehicles. This will essentially give us four new vehicles this, this, but this current budget year. As you can see by the cost breakdown, we are going to come out the first year actually $20,000 ahead of what we budgeted. So to come out ahead and have four new vehicles, it's, it's a good, good deal. That would include all the maintenance on the vehicles. It's a win-win. I don't see any issues. Talk to Dave Axteau from Harrison Township. He's been in this plan for five years, and he says it's a fantastic plan. So he's, he recommends it highly.
We've been talking about several communities. We've been talking about it a long time. It's finally kicking off, so.
No-brainer.
I think it's a good thing. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the enterprise lease agreement in the amount of $27,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the enterprise lease agreement in the amount of $27,214.56 a year for the lease of four trucks.
Support.
Okay, any more discussion? And when we really, when this really pays off is when we sell these trucks back to them. Like you say, we, some of them, we're gonna, we're gonna drive them for free, basically. They're close to it. I know the one for our township is, it's actually going to show up here in about a week. And they may say, you know, okay, you're gonna, you guys are gonna drive it for a year and let's turn it in. And they'll, they'll probably give us more money than we paid for it. And then we'll get another new vehicle out of it. And definitely reduces our maintenance costs. Safer vehicles.
Totally.
I mean, it's, it's like you say, it's, how many times we talk about, where's the catch? I mean, it's, we, and we hashed it over and talked to a lot of people. We can't find the catch, so.
We will.
Yeah, we will.
Other than we don't have the vehicles yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the catch.
So yeah, that's the problem, getting them. Who knows when they're gonna show up? So any more discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Do we have anything for me here?
Oh, you mean now that he spent all of our DPW money?
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna leave.
Yeah. Stay up there, John.
Key to the city?
So if we just don't make a motion, will you stay?
Just to the bathrooms, buddy.
Keep the city, just keep them.
Just to the bathrooms.
Just as few as you have.
Next on the agenda, we have our resolution for commendation of retirement for John DeBoyer.
I will motion to approve Resolution 2021-45, the commendation of retirement for John DeBoyer. Support.
I'll support that.
Everybody supports it.
I think we should vote it down.
That's what I said.
Well, we have to discuss it first.
We have to discuss it. But I'd like to read our resolution that we are passing. We, as trustees of Township of Clay, desire to convey to you an expression of appreciation and grateful, grateful acknowledgement of the valued services rendered by you to the township for 34 years. He doesn't look that old, does he?
It's over 34.
Yeah.
It says over 34.
May 11th, 1985.
May 11th, 1985. What time? Yeah. The Township of Clay and, and you've been the superintendent for the past 22 years of the water department. You have given generously your time and efforts in a dignified, faithful, and professional manner. And Township Trustees of Clay Township sincerely appreciate the worthwhile contributions you have made towards the material development, communal welfare, and safety and quality of life in the town, in Clay Township. And as an occasion of your 34 years, over 34 years, of service, you are retiring to start a new, your next challenging, exciting chapter of your life. Therefore, let it be resolved by the Township Trustees of Clay, of the Township of Clay, that it is our sincere congratulations are expressed on the occasion of your retirement.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna miss this guy. And I hear he's gonna write a book, but I don't know.
Might be two volumes.
Might be, might be two volumes.
You better proofread it first.
And also, we have a resolution that was passed on the Senate floor of the state of Michigan, basically saying the same thing.
Wow.
For all your dedication and service. And like I say, I will tell you, when I first got in office, there was a lot of, a lot of issues and challenges in the water department. And we worked together and it's come a long ways, a long ways.
It has.
And I have to thank.
I appreciate your help.
I gotta thank you for that, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Just like to say thank you to the entire board. Thank you for your support over the years. You guys have been awesome. And it's been an honor to serve everyone here, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Wasn't easy.
Yeah. It's rolling, right?
Lot of decisions out there.
You will be missed.
And I, the other thing I want to mention, I did have a full head of hair when I started.
All right. All right, next we'll go into board member comments.
Hang on a second. I think we need to pass, I'd like to pass that.
Oh!
We had motion and support.
Motion and support. Well, we don't need to let them retire. All right, resolution, we gotta do a roll call.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
All right, motion passes. Okay, next we have board member comments. Cindy?
Well, congrats to Ron and John. You will be dearly missed. Please don't be a stranger. Everyone says they won't be, but they are. And I can't say I don't blame you. Other than that, hug your kids, call your parents, have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, have safe holidays.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the individuals for, the community for coming in tonight. You certainly know how to spice up a meeting, which, which is good. It's really important to hear from you direct. I get very few correspondents throughout the community through my email, through phone, through simple observation. I don't get asked a lot of questions out there. So it's important that this is good feedback for the entire board when, when we get your input. So it's important in shaping the future of this community. I'd like to thank you for, for coming and participating tonight. Secondly, I want to thank John DeBoyer for whom he is as a person, as a DPW super, and as a man of the community. John, I've watched you since about 2006. Is when I really got active in the community. And I've seen you unselfishly give of your time to the community members, to your peers, and most importantly, to the kids.
Yes.
Of this community. And I think that you don't get enough recognition for all the time and effort you put into our young people. I think you're a good role model. I think you are a good leader. I think you've earned your level of respect rather than demand for it. And personally, I'm gonna miss you. So thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Chrissy?
I want to say congratulations to John as well. Enjoy some sun instead of midnight water main breaks in the middle of January. And then I'd also like to report to the board that we did take in public donations for the Downriver Goodfellows. And they totaled $1,300 this year, which is amazing. And we, they picked up three large containers of toys, gifts, hats, and gloves that were picked up last week. So thank you to the community for doing that.
Yes, and I know they did a food drive, too, today.
Today.
And we had about 130 families come for the food drive and picked up all the, all the food for it. And yeah, the Goodfellows are, actually became, they got a lot of good funding this year and doing a great job. Mark?
Yeah, again, I'd like to thank the community for coming up for the support. Appreciate it quite a bit. Asking, one, one responded, asked about what can they do about the bridge or any of the issues on the road or whatever, MSP? But you're better off to contact Dan Lowers directly. Go on and, and write him and everybody do that, whatever it is you want to talk about. I want to thank Kathy for, because the timeline that she put together and obviously all the public commenters. And congratulate Ron for a new hire and congratulate John Boyer for his retirement. Good job.
Maureen?
Well, I want to say thank you to the No Limits Fishing Adventures. That's really great, all that they're doing. Of course, congratulates Ron and John. Merry Christmas and, you know, like Cindy said, hug your family, have a happy, Happy New Year. I'm gonna pass these out here. You can just pass these down if you don't mind, Joanne. I want to just apologize to the board for the late notice on this. I got it late, you know, but I think with the, with what we've got going on and the quick timeline of having a public hearing maybe soon, that the board needs to know this information, along with the people. Last meeting, after the December 6 meeting, Artie pulled me aside privately to share many of his concerns regarding the planning commission. And I wasn't really sure why I didn't voice those at the meeting, but I promised you, Artie, that I would look into it and get back with you. You didn't say no, keep this private, so, you know, I did what you asked. So I supplied each of you with a copy of the correspondence between Kathy Schweikart and myself, because that's who I said I was gonna contact. I told Artie that I would contact her and that's what I'm reporting on today. Kathy explained that she put her answers together with input from two other board members, so that not just her answers. In my opinion, it appears that our township supervisor is attempting to discredit the planning commission's efforts, effectiveness, and performance. I mean, that's only my opinion, but is it so that you can convince us to vote in your favor to make the changes you're attempting in order to, you know, get more control over the township's decisions and directions? I mean, that's just my own personal question and I think questions, you know, valid. I don't know. Are you accustomed to everyone on the board just backing every decision? I mean, without a question? We've had nine members on the planning commission since the 60s. And according to Artie, the township planner and attorney are suggesting that we reduce to seven members. But as Kathy mentioned, similar neighboring communities also have nine members. That includes Marine City, Algonak, Ira, and she didn't talk about Fair Haven, also Fair Haven. That makes me question the planner and the attorney's recommendation. Currently on our, our board, our planning commission board, four of the nine members are from Harson's Island. The new makeup would possibly have two of seven members from the island. I've been told by people on the board here that Harson's Island only accounts for 18% of the voters. But the, the Michigan Township Association book does not talk about voters in the makeup of the members. In addition, why should we discount the voters? Aren't the non-homestead property owners to be represented? They pay larger taxes, they deserve representation. So directly from page 353 of that book from the Michigan Township Association, it says, "The membership of a planning commission must be representative of important segments of the community and representative of the entire territory." Nothing about voters. Harson's Island representation is essential. Kathy Schweikart and Whitey Simon, the two members that Artie wants to remove, have been serving here longer than Artie has. They have undeniable knowledge and experience that cannot be replaced, in my opinion. Kathy was voted in by her peers on the planning commission to be the leader or the chair, and Whitey was chosen to be secretary. They both want to continue to serve. They take pride in their positions. If we had people that weren't willing to serve, I could understand reducing from nine to seven, but we have experienced people who are willing to serve. Last year, as Kathy mentioned, she's been serving for about 14 months without reappointment or at least 12 months. And I presented to the board, you know, like you're talking about, Chris, you want to hear from the community. I had email after email from the community supporting Kathy's renomination. There's just an outcry to keep Kathy and Whitey in position. At our last meeting, Chris Holcomb, who's also a member of the planning commission, requested us as a board to amend the agenda and reappoint Whitey and Kathy. So I'm gonna appeal to you, Artie, to reappoint these members tonight, especially after you hear. Thank you. Yeah, especially after you have to hear what they've had to say about your issues with the planning commission. So the whole thing is in order to keep the board fully informed, is why I'm, I'm gonna read the questions and the responses that I've given to you. And again, these were Artie's concerns that he shared with me on December 6 of why he needs to realign the board. So the first question was, why was the November and December meetings canceled? And her answer with the other people from the board was, "The meetings were canceled due to nothing pending, and nothing was ready to be discussed in an efficient manner." She contacted Cindy Babbage the week before to verify that we have, you know, what we have and then make a decision based on that information whether to proceed with the meeting. And, I mean, I think you were concerned about the parks and rec plans, so was wondering why November and December is canceled. So she says, "Seems Artie should be checking with his planner and building department on that issue." Artie did not bother to communicate to find out why the meetings were canceled. He's the one complaining about no communication, which is, you know, in the next question coming up. Parks and Rec plan due in three weeks, will it be ready? And that was like a big part of why, what you mentioned in December 6 meeting, why the planning commission has to be done. They're not doing things on time. And it's not gonna be ready in three weeks. But again, as she explained, on Monday, December 13, she spoke with Cindy B. regarding the plan. On Tuesday, December 14, I spoke with Steve, the township planner, and was updated that his company has been working on the park and rec plan. Weeks or months before those, Steve had sent a $1,500 proposal to update the plan and didn't receive a response from you. Then on Thursday, December 16, Steve did get your formal authorization to proceed for the 1,500. Then she was contacted on Saturday, December 18 with that updated information. So the parks and rec plan is overdue, but the cause was the delay of funding, wasn't the planning commission. Communication is poor. You said that communication between the board and the planning commission is poor. And the answer is, we all know that the only way Artie communicates is through emails telling us what he wants us to get done after he meets with residents and gives them placating info or makes them promises the planning commission can't keep.
Lot of reading.
Artie seems to want to place blame anywhere but on himself and wants to control everything. We didn't know the planning commission was obligated to keep in constant contact with the supervisor. It is our understanding that we are an independent board that handles issues brought to us through public hearings, public master plan, requests of Township Building Department, Gary, the ZBA, and of Township Board of Trustees for review. Artie has constant access to what topics will be coming to the planning commission long before we usually do, since he's at the township offices daily. As far as communication between the PC and the board, Mark is on the board. He gives the board an accurate synopsis of the planning commission's work, events, issues presented by the public. We've had plenty of communication with the board with our emails and presentations made to them last year and this year on what Artie is attempting to do to the PC. Yet, there was no communication back and no questions asked of anyone on the planning commission, even though we were all there. Lack of communication, question mark? Did Kathy, Harold, or Whitey get a response to their initial emails to Artie requesting reappointment? No. He doesn't have the common courtesy to be honest and say, "I appreciate your continued interest in being reappointed, but have to say that the board," which we know is really just Artie, "has decided that we feel it may be a good time to have some fresh minds on the planning commission. We have to say, we encourage Artie and the board to watch our meetings, come to our meetings, or at the least, read the minutes." It may not be the case, but it appears that they know nothing of the process and that got whatever is in front of them from the planning commission to the board, other than what Artie tells them. Then it's his version of what needs to be said to make it how he wants it to read. Perfect examples would be the sand pit and how he completely inaccurately presented the board, the stipulations we based our approval on, and how evident it was that he had multiple he had multiple conversations with the Pizoros and had made them promises he needed to keep, and the only way was to make the planning commission look bad and gloss over the actual reading of the stipulations we placed on the approval. Artie suggests that the planning commission is doing things wrong and this causes lawsuits to occur. It's frustrating and it's just not true." A real eye-opener for me was when you said Whitey Simon attacks the board and that's why he needs to be removed. And, you know, again, I'm new, so I go to the planning commission, I ask. So they said, "As far as Whitey attacking the board, making comments during a planning commission meeting or at a hearing, we can't say we've ever seen that. Whitey had his chance at the board meeting on December 6 and chose to remain silent. I don't know how he did it, but he did. Whitey's email to Artie inquiring as to his reappointment after Artie's response that he was going to the poll board on what they wanted to do did not contain any type of verbal attack against Artie by Whitey, just merely that Whitey felt Artie was saying he apparently didn't meet that direction. Funny that after a board meeting where citizens got up and voiced their support of Whitey, Artie then found it necessary to tell Maureen that Whitey attacks the board regularly. Artie accused the planning commission of doing nothing, was responsible for getting the township sued, was lucky that Blue Horseshoe didn't sue us because the planning commission took two and a half years to approve their request, and did this all in front of the board and the public. Those in the world that will watch the video of the meeting will note that the planning commission had no chance to present the real truth to any of these people. Again, we've not witnessed Whitey attacking the board. Mr. Simon has much knowledge of our history and his opinion on how the board is conducting themselves. He's entitled to his opinion. This is government at its finest when there are checks and balances. Why does Artie feel threatened?" You know, and you pledged to be impartial, so I think, you know, that's not impartial when you're saying Artie attacks the board, and I guess we need to see proof of that. And then you said that, you know, the planning commission wasted a bunch of time on the fence ordinance that was not necessary to have it. And her answer is, "The planning commission has been addressing fences for as long as I have been on the board. Inconsistent interpretations of front yard versus backyard have contributed much to the confusion and brought the matter to the planning commission. This last round of discussions regarding fences had to do with waterfront property and fences. The planning commission held two public hearings regarding this topic, requesting our planners to provide us information from other communities on how they handle waterfront fences, and listen to the citizens that attended those public hearings, along with Gary from our building department, to try and come up with a workable fence ordinance. The planning commission did not, just out of the clear blue sky, decide to look at a fence ordinance because we had nothing better to do. It was brought to the planning commission's attention, I believe, during Sid's time in the building department." Continued on with Gary, whom we asked many times during our meetings, his thoughts on this, and we ended up with the ordinance that was presented to the board of trustees. Again, the planning commission would have more than likely been just as happy not having to deal with this item. Also, we would like to mention that Artie, over the past many years, keeps sending citizens to the planning commission supposedly telling them that we can take care of their matters, and then we end up with people who are just very unhappy with Artie and what he has supposedly told them and what we on the planning commission can actually do. That's all I can remember. Okay, so, I mean, Artie, this is me talking now. That's Kathy's and the planning commission answers are over, but I just believe you have a duty to the community, you know, to reappoint Kathy Schweikart and Whitey Simon. And I'd like the board to think about that, too. I mean, well, are we working for the people and doing what the community is requesting and offer them a reappointment now?
Well, I... Thank you for your comments, and I'll tell you what, maybe we'll entertain that thought at our next meeting. I'm not going to do it now in board member comments.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, I mean, we could have done it earlier.
Let me ask you a question.
We could have done it earlier if you would have let me get on the agenda, but that's, you didn't give me a choice.
Well, yeah, if you talked to us like before Thursday.
I didn't have the information back.
You say you get all these emails from people about support for Whitey. Why don't you forward those to me?
I did. That was a year ago.
Or the rest of the board.
That was a year ago.
Artie, we're kind of getting in the weeds here, Joanne.
No, that was a year ago. You're asking me, and I've got to defend myself. That was a year ago when I spoke a long time and you posted the meeting with a very unattractive picture of me going, because I mentioned, I, every single person, I gave their name. And we can look at that meeting again. I can get all that information back together for you if you want it.
Yeah, well, it's okay.
And I, but that was a year ago. That was for Kathy. Now, there's a lot of support for Whitey, and he hasn't been reappointed. So I, you know, I'm going to urge the public to send everyone on the board. Our emails are on the website. If you want Whitey reappointed, if you want Kathy reappointed, please make your voices heard. If you know people who couldn't be here tonight, ask them to send this to the board. Again, we work for you, and that's what I'm trying to do. So Merry Christmas!
All right, thank you. Joanne?
John, I remember the board that I was on when we elected you to be the new superintendent of the department.
A hundred years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, just a few years ago, yeah.
You said a hundred?
I remember that day, yeah, because I was barely new to the board. Yeah, we were two kids. Yeah, so best of everything to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate all you did.
Yeah, I and the board appreciate everything you've done. So anyway, that's all I have to say tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, where do I start?
Except, excuse me, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Let me talk about the planning commission at first, briefly. The facts are, under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act 33 of 2008, and it states that you're required to reestablish the planning commission. So doing that, talking to our planner and our attorney, I think I had three separate conversations with them. They tell, they tell me that the optimal number for a community our size for a planning commission, they both agreed, is seven. And they will back, they will back you up on that. And I asked them, "Why does communities have nine, smaller communities?" And they said, "Generally, it's because they have a hard time getting a quorum, and it's a lot easier to get five people to show up out of nine than it is four people out of seven." And he goes, "That's the main reason that they see it, is why some communities have nine." I'm sorry, this is my, my time. I gave you your time. And that's the main reason. So, the ordinance to reconfirm a PC is dependent on what act the planning commission was created under. It states right in it. Clay Township was established under Act 285 of 1931. The statute written in 2008 basically says, "This is the statute. If you were created under that act, the 1931 act, that's the statute that we pulled." Pretty much Cindy did it, pretty much word for word. The letter that was read last week by Maureen, or at our last meeting, Maureen, our attorney looked at it, because I questioned it, we got it right before. He's talking about a totally different act, a totally different ordinance that we are obligated to follow. He was basically barking up the wrong tree, and that did not hold any water whatsoever.
It was a letter from Concerned Citizens. It wasn't my letter, sorry, just so you know.
Right. To reestablish the planning commission, it is required that the public, or the planning commission holds a public hearing. The board directed the planning commission to do that, to hold a public hearing. And, and the question to change the number of planning commissioners to seven is, like I said, is on the advice of our attorney and planner, but they can deal with that at the public hearing. I'm not going to say, you know, it would be presumptuous of us to say, "We're going to change it to seven, we're going to keep it at nine," whatever. It needs to be talked about and at a public hearing. And that's what the whole thing was, and that's what this board directed the planning commission to do. Like I said, right now, the PC, the planning commission consists of four islanders, is 44% of the, of the planning commission board is islanders, right now. Last time I checked, the island holds 18% of the electoral, but the actual property mass of the island is, I believe, 28% of the township. Could be 30%. So yes, the island has...
And taxes is added.
You know what? I have that number. In fact, I, thank you for reminding me. It was 28% of the mass, landmass on the island, and it pays for 31% of the total of Clay Township. 31%. So if, if the, if the, right, and there's 44% right now on the planning commission. If it does go down to seven and a reduction, it would be a 28% of the island would be from the islands, pretty much even where it should be. And I will, I said it at the last meeting, and I will reiterate it, I have no want or desire to be on the planning commission. We took the ordinance right out of the statute, how it was written. And trust me, if this board or the planning commission wants to take that part of the ordinance out, I have no issue with it. We did talk about it at the last board meeting, and we thought, "Well, why would this board want to hand tie future boards if they did want the supervisor on it or not?" That's, that's always brought up, so.
Is this required to be done by law?
It states under, that it is required to reestablish the planning commission.
By law?
It's not required to reestablish.
In the 2008, in the Planning Enabling Act 33 of 2008, it states that it is required to reestablish the planning commission.
Within so many years, or?
It says that, that's what it says. This is comments, this is comments, it's not question and answer. You can look at it yourself. Call Steve Kasten, call our planner. Call our planner.
You're saying this is something we have to do? We have to reestablish the planning commission?
It's in the statute that needs to be reestablished.
By when?
I don't know off the top of my head. Talk to Steve Kasten. This isn't our question and answer, this is public, or my, my comment, so. As far as the master plan, I, you know, there was a big hoopla about it because the process, how it went down, it went out for a public hearing for everyone to hear about the master plan. It went out to all our communities next to us to see if they have any comment. And like I said, I think they had two public hearings. After the public hearings, they changed the, the plan to include the plans for the breach. And everyone thinks, "Oh, this is why he's mad." No, the process, that should have been in the plan before the public hearings and before it went out to the adjacent communities. I asked our attorney, "If we approve this after a significant change without a public hearing, could we be in trouble?" And they said, "Yes, most definitely." They need to have at least one more public hearing on it and let the communities adjacent know about it.
The bridge was in the first one. The bridge was in there before the...
Is that on the calendar?
What?
Is that on the calendar?
I don't know what calendar you're talking, anyhow, no, it wasn't.
The bridge was on there, but you wanted extra verbiage about the bridge. That's what had to be done, but the bridge was on the original master plan.
Please. Did I interrupt you?
No, but you got to say it accurately. You got to say it accurately.
It was changed. It needed, and the attorneys agreed, it needed to go back to, for a public hearing, because I didn't want a year, two years, five years from now, someone come up and say, "Hey, this wasn't done right. It wasn't, the process was not followed, set by the state of Michigan." I tried to get them to redo that. They, I was actually on the agenda to talk about it, and on the beginning of the agenda, they, they removed it off the agenda. They didn't even want to talk about it at the planning commission. So it came to us, and this board told them, "No, it's got to go back to public, you know, the process again, per our attorney's advice. So be it. Call me the bad guy, I don't care. I'm making sure things are done right." And I always said, "You know what? The popular thing and the right thing are a lot of times two different things." And when I ran, I said, "I'm going to do the right thing." So, might not be the popular thing, which it isn't tonight.
Not transparent either.
Oh, and you know what? This board is more transparent than any other board I can think of. We are the only community that posts everywhere and films these meetings and put them everywhere for everybody to hear. We're the only community that puts the ZBA and the planning commission out on, on the internet for everybody to see. No, this is my comments. So, let's go to the next big elephant in the room. This thing which I just got today, I just got pictures of it. But first of all, I will make a comment, I can't make excuses for Champions Auto Ferry. They, in my mind, too, their service has been below the bar a lot of times. I sat in the line Friday myself. I understand there's a lot of frustrations, and rightly so. I also understand it's hard to run a business in today's world with everything going on. But like I say, it's not my job or my responsibility to talk for Champions Auto Ferry. This township board, this township has zero control over Champions Auto Ferry. Zero control. I'm going to give you a little history lesson tonight. And, and, you know, we can't, someone said, "Well, why don't you fine him? For what? We have no, no right or jurisdiction to fine him, to fine the ferry for a long line or this or that." So anyhow, I got to give everyone a little history lesson. And we referred to it today. About eight years ago, you know, it was about nine years ago I got in office. Shortly after, we saw a problem, and I got to go through this because this all happened during a lot of things we're going to talk about. And we, we saw some improprieties, and we called in an investigation. And we saw some improprieties, and we called in an investigation on our old clerk. And at the time, I couldn't tell any, I couldn't comment, I couldn't tell anybody about it. I couldn't mention it at all, what was going on. I could only say, there's an investigation going on. And I was getting a lot of heat, you know, everyone thought I was being a bully to our old clerk and this and that. So be it. I, for the good of the township, I took it all, and because I knew I could not make a comment about. At the same time, because of malfeasance of that, of her job, she screwed up in payroll, doing payroll taxes, and the township was in arrears over seven hundred thousand dollars in penalties and fines to the IRS. So, we were doing that, trying to expunge that, and I was working with Tammy, actually, just brought on. And so, while this was all going on, at the same time, Jim Wilson, actually, I think it was Bill Greitop, contacted me. Jim Wilson was the director of the Blue Water Transportation Authority. He contacted me through the plant, through Bill Greitop, the county commissioner. I think I can help the island out. Because I tried it in nineteen ninety-seven, and it did not work. We tried to get an agreement for operations of the ferry, and I never did see the framework for that. I see that there's a signature page here, but I'd love to see what that agreement looked like. I never seen that. And it was rejected by HIDA, and they actually threatened to sue us, sue Blue Water. And I can verify all this if you give me a chance, and if you want to do a little homework. Everything in here, I can verify, a hundred percent. And I signed my name to it. But there was a big question about this legal opinion, who, and I got it because HIDA, or not HIDA, Blue Water Transportation Authority, said, we need to have things cleared up about where HIDA is. We need to know what their status is, and a lot of questions. Also, at the same time, I'm trying to clean up our audit, and you go back several audits, it says, no reporting or financial statements was delivered to the township from HIDA. It's a statutory requirement for HIDA, and it's in their Articles of Incorporation that they provide the township with financials, records, minutes, and there's a few other things in there that they have to get, present us, and they never have. So that was one of the blumishes going way back. So I think a person before you, you know, hey, what's going on with HIDA? I don't know, I'll ask them. Hey, I contacted HIDA, we need your financials and your minutes. They refused to give them to me. Flat out refused to give them to me. So anyhow, we get this opinion, and by getting this opinion, we actually worked with the old HIDA board, and the attorney, John McNamee, worked with the old HIDA board to form this opinion. There was no secrets about it, there never has been, getting it. On page four in the opinion, it says, HIDA shall provide minutes, budgets, financial statements, and schedule, and meeting schedules to Clay Township. It's in the opinion. On page ten, it states, the removal of HIDA board members is permissible for good cause, not following the statutory requirements, and not following the Articles of Incorporation. Send them in. I chose not to go down that road, back then even. Everyone thinks I want this board to disappear. I chose not to go down that road because they definitely violated this. Page eleven, it states that Blue Water Transportation Authority, to regulate Champions Auto Ferry, HIDA would have to agree to it. So for Blue Water Transportation Authority to step in, HIDA would have to agree to it. Blue Water wanted to find out if that was a fact, and it is, still is. Page twelve on this, the recommendation is for, to make HIDA board, HIDA board members current, that the HIDA board shall provide the township the requested minutes, budgets, financial statements, and schedule of meetings to Clay. I gave this to the old HIDA board, and then again, asked them for the financial statements that our auditors are requesting. They refused again. So, and during this, it was very hard for me to communicate with HIDA. All the communications were through the acting chair, Don Versalip, mostly verbal. They didn't do many emails, and it appeared that they were not holding public meetings following the Open Meetings Act, which is required. They were not doing that at all. Quite frankly, if I ran the township like they were running the HIDA board then, I'd be in jail. Yes, I did ask the, I did ask them to resign so I could repopulate the board, as it was recommended in the legal opinion. And this was after they refused to follow their own statutory duties, blah, 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 which I said. After receiving a letter from them that they would not resign, but they would not seek another term, so I recommended to this board at the time that we would appoint two new members to HIDA, which we did. We nominated Mitch Fannin and Paul Van Tassel to serve on the board. And I also, in that letter, they mentioned that they have a letter of understanding with the bridge company, the HIDA board, where they agreed the bridge company would work close with HIDA on the ins and outs of attaining a bridge. I asked for a copy of that letter of understanding, because I figured the islanders should know what's in it. I didn't know, nobody knew. They refused to give that to me. So anyhow, we, the Clay Township fulfilled our part of repopulating the HIDA board. And to my knowledge, HIDA never met again. We never received anything. They never had one meeting, to my knowledge. In fact, in two thousand sixteen, when the whole bridge thing was going with Manny Maroon, I called HIDA, Mitch Fannin, and I, I think it was Don Versalip, I can't remember who else. Hey, guys, are you going to get involved in this? And they said, no, we're staying mute. In two thousand sixteen, when Maroons were trying to put a bridge to Harson's Island, they stood mute. They never met once that I know of, they never did anything because I said, you know, supposedly you have some type of letter of understanding, which we never seen. And they stood mute. So, it is referred to in this letter, I tried to get rid of HIDA, I tried this, I tried that. That's the opposite, that's the exact opposite. We repopulated it back in, I don't know, in two thousand fifteen. Now, this is the midst of going through a big time investigation with the Michigan State Police and dealing with IRS issues, and without having a clerk here also. So, I'm going to shift gears now, and like I say, this can all be verified. Blue Water Transportation Authority met with them. Through the Blue Water Transportation Authority, Harson's Island could get federally and state-funded for capital improvements, for docks, roads, boats, et cetera. It would come all from Act Fifty-One money. Eighty percent would come from the federal government, twenty percent would come from state funds. Blue Water, Blue Water Transportation, I'm just going to call them Blue Water, would get the funds that would equal, over and above the funds for capital improvements. Blue Water would get the funds equal to fifty percent of the operating expenses for the No questions asked. Actually, the state sends it to them right now, and they, because there's no operating agreement, it goes back to the state. I had meetings with Jim Wilson, the guy that run, at the time, was in charge of Blue Water Transportation, our, the county commissioner at that time, Bill Greitop, David Bryson, and the president of the Home Wars Association at that time, I think they had a couple members there. There was a couple other county guys at it, and another member from Blue Water Transportation. We had meetings about it, talking about it. HIDA was invited, and they did not come to these meetings. And it was agreeable, the ferry was agreeable, at that time, to do the same agreement with Blue Water that the Beaver Island Ferry has with the Transportation Authority up there. So, the framework of this, which we put together, all revenues collected from the ferry, and all federal and state assistance would go to Blue Water. They would be control of all the revenue. Blue Water would oversee the funds and cut checks to pay for approved operating costs and capital expenses. Blue Water would set the ferry rates, and given of the amount of revenues that are collected from subsidies and from fares, and it would be approved under MDOT. And all, right away, when this was going on, there was a rate increase in process, it was going up a buck. And he goes, once this is approved, I'll reverse that rate increase right away. It won't happen. And in time, once we get everything in place, there may be even a reduction in the ferry rates going forward. This is two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Oversight of the ferry would be under the Blue Water Transportation Authority and And like I say, Blue Water would control the checkbook and release the funds for approved expenses. This was the framework that we were going to strive for. And what Jim Wilson wanted to do is put the framework together, and if he got the buy-ins from all the people, all the organizations, then he would go forward to put it together. The county commissioners, St. Clair County Commissioners, Clay Township Board, Harson's Island St. Clair Flats Association, and Champions Auto Ferry agreed on the framework. At the time, because we couldn't get them at the meeting, the Harson's Island Transportation Authority wouldn't give us, agreed to it in writing, they gave us a verbal. Jim Wilson was very cautious, he said, because HIDA, and he goes, in nineteen ninety-seven, we did a lot of work to try to put this together, and they initially agreed it, with it, and then blocked it late, threatening a lawsuit between HIDA and Blue Water Transportation Authority. That's why he wanted in the opinion to see if they actually could do that. I can verify this, and I will. I'll show you where you can go, so don't call me a liar. And I signed my name. So, Jim Wilson went through the Champions Auto Ferry books, did a review, and after, like he said, and I'll give you the meaning where he said it, he said, given the review, that we would not need the rate increase, and there may be a rate reduction going forward. He also said, this is back two thousand thirteen, he also, and this guy's been in transportation, he's run public transportation companies for, at the time, twenty-five years, he's got a master degree in it, he knows his stuff. At the same time, he said, he also said that, if the agreement does not go through, the outlook for the island is not good, with seawalls, docks, that are starting to fail. They need lots of money, and which he can get under the federal, under federal monies under Act Fifty-One. Have you ever been to Seattle and seen the ferries there, or Alaska? There's some up these, they're beautiful. They're absolutely beautiful. How in the heck can they afford that? They can't. It's all done through Act Fifty-One money. And that's what he was striving to do for us. And he said, given the financial situation I see, and the rate structure, and how everything's worked, we don't get this agreement. There's going to be problems with their docks, with their seawall. He knew what he was talking about. Everyone's shaking their head. I'm going to ask you to give about forty minutes on YouTube and look at it. So, and another thing too, it needs to be brought up, Blue Water Transportation Authority is the only entity in St. Clair County that can seek and receive these Act Fifty-One monies. HIDA can't go for it itself. It's only one entity per county, and they are already receiving these funds for the bus system that they operate. After HIDA verbally agreed to the Blue Water framework, they would not give their consent to it in writing. They just went and do it. And then after a while, after, I'm not sure how long it took, I told them, you know, you got to make a decision, one way or another. Are you on it, or are you not? They verbally told Jim Wilson, no, we're not going to accept it. He asked them to give it to them in writing, and they said they wouldn't. They contacted me verbally, I was actually cutting the grass in my front lawn, and two of the, two of the HIDA board people came over, we're not accepting this agreement already. And I asked them if they would do it in writing, and never got it, never, never, never did. So, Blue Water went away, and I'm sorry to say, and I wish it would have passed, but it didn't. If you want to verify these facts, I'm going to refer you, and I'll put the link online. If you go to a YouTube clip... If you go to a YouTube clip titled, "St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Meeting, April 4, 2013," go to the 40-minute mark, and that's where he starts testifying to the county. And everything in here, I wrote and said, he said at that meeting, to the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. He said how Haida, back in 97, threatened him with a lawsuit, so they backed off. And they refused, he didn't say, at the time, at this, there was a verbal commitment from Haida, but the only reason it didn't go through, they would not give us a written commitment to the framework. So again, St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Meeting, April 4, 2013. So now, I'm looking at this letter, there's a lot of mistruths in this letter, and half-truths. I mean, I can go, I mean, just about everything in here. It is referred that the Michigan Public Service Commission does safety inspections. They never did safety inspections of the ferry, never. Coast Guard still does safety inspections on the vessels. Yes, it's an issue, the dock itself does not get inspected. And I brought that up. I thought MDOT, or at least the Army Corps of Engineers, should inspect it, but they stay mute on it. They stay mute on it. I do believe that the insurance company requires them to have an engineer inspection on it. I can't say that for sure. But as far as a government agency, there is none that inspects public piers or public docks over the water. The township's jurisdiction stops at the seawall, flat out, stops at the seawall. And as my coach, if there's a dead guy in the water two feet from the seawall, it's not our jurisdiction, it's county's. We stop at the seawall. So, yeah, and we can't find them for the kind of stuff that was brought up, we don't have the jurisdiction. Our Billy Inspector can't walk out on the dock and say, "This needs to be fixed on the dock." We don't have that authority, flat out.
I thought you just said right to the seawall.
Right, right to the seawall. Past the seawall, we don't have authority. The docks are past the seawall.
It's attached to it where? It's attached to it?
It doesn't matter, it's out over the water. We don't-
How bad does that seawall on the island side is falling in?
Right.
That falls under your jurisdiction.
We don't have jurisdiction over seawalls, as Army Corps of Engineer, and this Michigan Department of Resources. And, you know, Jim Wilson must've known what he was talking about eight years before. If this deal wasn't taken, put in effect, you're gonna have problems with seawalls and docks, which we do now.
Can I just ask, before you keep going on?
No.
You said that Jim Wilson went through the ferry books, so-
Yes.
Dave opened his books to him, and then the other question I have is, you appointed Mitch Fannin and Paul Van Tassel to serve, to replace the people on Haida.
Yes.
And they're the ones that never met with the people who didn't give you, and didn't cooperate. Those were people that you appointed.
Right.
Did you contact them and say, "Why aren't you doing this?" I mean, you appointed them.
I did.
So can we get this back? Can we get this agreement now? Because maybe you have, I'm sure you have Haida people that will cooperate.
They are cooperating now. Let me get, okay?
Okay, all right. Well, let's get this Blue Water thing back, because obviously we need it.
Hello. So, in essence, the old Haida Board rejected the Blue Water Transportation Agreement. I know you don't like what you're hearing, but it's the truth.
I mean, two of the five people that you put, that you appointed, are the ones that objected?
It states in here somewhere, that I took offense to, and this board should, "Basic island services as limited, such as fire, EMTs, has been limited by Artie Bryson and this Board." That is so not true. And I thought they were referring to when the dock was broken and the ferry wasn't running. And during that time, we actually had fully-staffed fire unit department over there with the EMTs. We had ALS-staffed unit over there for tri-hospital. We had people on this side of the river for transportation if it was needed. And we had the US Coast Guard helicopter and Medevac, MedStar Medevac, we had two helicopter companies on standby, if needed, during that, the whole closure, 24/7.
It took us 45 minutes to get to a flooded airport. And that's all required by law.
So, anyhow, I definitely take offense of that. So then there were some questions on this thing. Let's see. Hopefully, this won't take too much longer. Oh, let's see, yeah, okay, it mentions the contract between the ferry and Blue Water Transportation back in 97. I never, like I reported, I never saw that, I've seen that in total, I've seen the signature page, but I never seen that agreement in 97. I asked Haida for it, never received it, Blue Water can't find it. So that's referred to in here. But it goes on to say how I helped, you know, whatever it says. Number two, it's saying that we, I went and got this legal opinion behind closed doors, behind everybody's back, when the legal opinion has been shared with everybody, it's been public, the old Haida Board helped form the legal opinion, not true. They're complaining about, "Oh, I had the audacity to ask the old Haida Board to resign." Yes, because of non-compliance of Articles and Corporation, and not doing their statutory They did all these decisions about the Blue Water Transportation Authority without having one public meeting about it. No minutes, no Open Meetings Act, nothing. At least, it was never given to this township. Number four, "Oh, I'm guilty of that, the Brysons." I had a fundraiser for Dan Lauer's campaign back in 2014, he was running for state rep, which, he won that, eighty percent of the island and the township voted for him. Then in 2016, he ran for Senate, which, again, over eighty percent of the island and township voted for him. And-
Did he have any opponents?
I don't know. Yeah, he did. Then in March, well, it was late 2017, he wrote a bill, 4807, which I was not privy of, and I never had any consulting of it with him. It was put together late, he passed it on December 28th, or it was passed on December 28th, 2017, went into effect in April, or March of 2018. Four or five years after, I had a fundraiser at my house, and it's a totally different office. Yeah, I'm guilty of having a fundraiser for him. And incidentally, after he passed this bill, I think he still carried half the island, believe it or not, I'd have to check. It's pretty amazing. Question five, they're asking questions about monies for the ferry. I can't answer that question, I don't have, or the township doesn't have the information, nor do we have the ability to get that information to answer that question. But if we're under Blue Water Transportation Authority, it would've been no problem. Let's see, six. Haida is, oh, it is referring to that, we wanted to make Haida disappear under my efforts, we tried to make it dormant. I was the one that appointed, and there was, this Board approved the new Haida members to repopulate it. I'm not sure, maybe they did, maybe they didn't, if the Harson's Island Transportation, or the Homewares Association was supposed to appoint two members and one member at large. I'm not sure if that happened or not. This Board held up our bargain for Haida. I'll make that clear.
Our Haida reappointments are up in February of '22 as well.
That's right.
So if anybody's interested, send a letter.
Yeah, we have two up in February, I'm told. So, I did not make Haida go dormant, as this states. Says that the master plan is approved, has things in it, about it for each, yes, it does. Okay, eight, that Haida was able to secure a grant from the state for $250,000. Yes, it does. And you, believe it or not, Dan Lauer's put that in the line, that line item in the state budget and passed it. And, like I did mention too, I'm having meetings with Gary Peters, Senator Gary Peters, I got a couple of them set up in about the next month, about this new infrastructure bill. If someone from Haida wants to come to me at these meetings too, and maybe get some information on this infrastructure bill, they're more than welcome. No problem. And let's see, nine, oh, they're talking about the Plan Commission, which I already talked about. So, again, if the Blue Water Transportation Agreement was made, the Lauer's bill would have not even be written and passed, that everyone's mad about. The ferry oversight would be under MDOT and Blue Water Transportation Authority, not the Michigan State Police. That's, if it was passed, that if Haida agreed to it back then, if it was passed, that's where we would be today. And also today, the round trip of ferry would probably be around $8 a round trip, because we would be getting subsidies for half the operating costs. It's all the facts. And like I say, if you don't believe, please go home, get on YouTube, I'll put a link out, but, "St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Meeting, April 4, 2013." Go to the 40-minute mark, and that's where Jim Wilson's testimony starts, to the St. Clair County Board of Commissioner about the Blue Water Transportation Authority having control of the ferry. That's all I gotta say right now. And to sum it up, congratulations, John. Do you need a rocking chair?
Not yet.
Not yet. And Ron, good first meeting. Sorry, bud, but congratulations. I wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Stay safe. Do me a favor, keep an eye on your neighbors during this. There's a lot of issues going on, and even extend a handout to the neighbors, maybe send some cookies over for them. We have to start talking to our neighbors more.
Motion to adjourn?
And God bless our community. Motion to adjourn, support. Thank you.